Recording in progress.
Chair of matter, we're ready to begin.
Can you please do the roll call, Ashley?
Yes, Chair of matter.
President.
Vice Chair Patel, here. Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
And Commissioner Williams.
Present.
This is a special meeting. The conference ID is eight four one seven five seven one seven nine zero two. And the passcode is four three nine six five one. Good evening and welcome. We are excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. And finally, we welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised that this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. You want to introduce the first item, Ashley, please?
Yes, item number one, general plan amendment to adopt Strive San Mateo General Plan 2040.
Thank you. We will start with a staff presentation followed by clarifying questions from the commission and public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak depending on the number of speakers. Once the public hearing is closed, the chair may ask staff to respond to any public comments and the commission will deliberate and make a recommendation to the city council on certification of the environmental impact report and adoption of the general plan.
All right. Should I begin? Please. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Commission. My name is Zach Dahl, interim director for the city's community development department, and I'm joined here by our consultant lead Joanna Jansen, principal with Placeworks. There we go. So we are here before you this evening to bring forward the final version of General Plan 24 or Strive San Mateo General Plan 2040. And we are looking forward to presenting that to you this evening and then ultimately receiving a recommendation that we can bring forward to the city council. There we go. So for tonight's agenda, we'll start with our presentation and then receive clarifying questions here from the public and then move to discussion and then ultimately a recommendation. Before we begin, as we always do, we want to acknowledge the team that is supporting this effort, but because tonight is our last night coming before you to discuss the general plan, we did want to, I did want to just take a moment to really acknowledge the team that has put in probably thousands of hours over the past five and a half years to get this document to this point. And so that starts with our staff team, including Manera Sandier, our planning manager, Summer Smith, associate planner, Bethany Lopez, senior engineer with the Public Works Department, and Mary Way, administrative assistant for CDD. This core team has really put in countless hours to support the efforts, the drafting of this document, all of the community outreach and engagement efforts. And so, and this also does include past staff who is no longer working on the plan or no longer with the city. This has been a substantial effort and so a lot has gone in from this group. Also, the technical advisory committee from every department here in the city, as well as San Mateo Consolidated Fire, their input and consultation in their areas of expertise has really helped ensure that we have a thorough and complete general plan and has been responsive as issues have been raised along the way. And then for our consultant team led by Placeworks, it's really been an excellent partnership, starting with Joanna Carey Stone, Angelica Garcia, also with PCRC, Good City Company, Nelson Nigar, Kittleson, EPS, BKF Engineers, E-Corp, and Forget Me Not History. It's really been a great bench of technical expertise that's supported this effort as well. So just want to give everyone that's been involved a little acknowledgement because it does feel significant to get to this point after we've spent so much time working on this document. So our objectives here really are to give you an overview of this final version of Strive San Mateo General Plan 24, 2040, and then ultimately hear your input and your recommendation to city council. So starting with an overview, we have, that was developed at the beginning of the process, our vision statement that has really kind of guided the foundation for how we build this general plan. And then kind of an overview of the milestones, starting in the fall of 2018, all the way to this past fall when we completed the draft general plan effort. So we used to have a much larger schedule and it's gotten significantly smaller and here we are at the planning commission meeting. And so this is, this is planning commission's adoption hearing where you make your recommendation. And then we'll be moving on to city council where we have two meetings scheduled in March. And then as always, want to make sure we give an acknowledgement to strive san mateo.org, which is a great, great library of resources for everything with the current general plan as well going back to the very beginning of the process, our interactive land use map, FAQs, and so much more. So this is really a great and comprehensive resource for everything general plan. And then also just because community engagement and outreach has been such a cornerstone of this effort, just looking back at what we've done since 2018, 80-plus events, workshops, staff presentations, seven online activities, 13 general plan subcommittee meetings, seven planning commission meetings, and 16 city council meetings. And so we want to just really acknowledge how much, how important this is and how much we have really worked to try to engage with all aspects of the community and make sure everybody has had a chance to provide input and engage and then hopefully see their input reflected in various ways throughout the document. So now to kind of give you an overview of what's in general plan 2040, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Joanna.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Zach. I'm Joanna Jansen with Placeworks and I want to just quickly give an overview of general plan 2040 for those who might be new to the process tonight. No, this, sorry. Okay. The general plan is made up of the elements that you see here listed on this slide covering a wide variety of topics that have to do with physical development, especially in San Mateo, as well as infrastructure, governments, services, safety, and many aspects of life in San Mateo. There's also other important pieces of the general plan that help users orient themselves and understand what's in the general plan, as well as how the general plan will be implemented. Throughout all of these different sections, we have three key themes that express how important these topics are to San Mateo and the community. Those three themes are sustainability, environmental justice, and community engagement. And they're represented by the three colored icons that you see on the left side of the slide. So you can find those throughout each element of the general plan. An important component of the general plan that we'll be talking about a little bit tonight and that we spent significant time and energy on throughout the process is the general plan land use map. This is important because the designations or the colors on this map identify where specific different land uses are allowed and not allowed. The land use map and the designations are intended to be flexible enough to give the city room to allow for creativity and innovation as projects evolve over time, but also to provide clear direction and predictability to ensure that the general plan vision can be achieved. The land use map was built through an extensive land use alternatives process that was really constructed around these 10 study areas, which you see on this slide, the areas that have the greatest likelihood of changing over the lifetime of the general plan in the next 20 years because they are close to transit, services, jobs, and major transportation infrastructure, as well as some areas where property owners expressed interest in seeing that kind of transformation. The draft general plan was out for public review this summer and fall. The general plan itself was published in July and then that was followed by the publication of the draft EIR or Environmental Impact Report in August. We had a 45-day EIR comment period that lasted until September. For the general plan, we had community engagement in lasting July through October, including five town halls in each one of San Mateo's city council districts. We then took the general plan, draft general plan to the general plan subcommittee meeting, two meetings with the planning commission in September, and then four meetings with the city council in October and November, as well as the general plan and the EIR being posted on strive san mateo.org. Like Zach mentioned earlier, we have also kept a running document archive of all of the public comments received on strive san mateo.org on the public comments page. So you can see the public comments there that were received during the review process for both the draft general plan and the draft EIR. So since the time that we received all of those comments and we had all of the meetings that I just described, we have made updates and revisions to the general plan to reflect that feedback and the direction of the city council. You have an attachment in your agenda report that lists all of those changes individually. But just to give you some examples of some of the substantive updates, including some that came from discussions here at the planning commission, we have consolidated and enhanced the support in the general plan for issues related to seniors and the aging population, new policies and actions to mitigate outdoor air quality in residential areas close to pollutant sources, to strengthen flooding and sea level rise policies and actions, including an action to evaluate a sea level rise or flooding overlay zone, new action to study the feasibility of new restrooms in city parks, to conduct a comprehensive park accessibility analysis, and really make sure that the circulation element highlights safety as a cornerstone throughout that element. We have also made some changes to the general plan 2040 land use map. Perhaps one of the most, one of the, has gotten the most attention is the direction to remove the residential high two and mixed use high two designations. That was direction from the council in November. We have also reduced the height limits and intensities for the office designations and limiting height and density along the edges of some of those 10 study areas that I showed in order to support transitions between what will be higher density areas in the future and adjacent areas that are low density and expected to remain low density. With those changes, we did want to reconsider the potential build out of general plan 2040. This is, shows up in a general plan policy that tasks the city with monitoring development and making sure that any development beyond these amounts is, requires additional analysis. So the revised totals for the housing units and population and jobs can be seen on the right. All of those numbers went down slightly, given the land use changes that I described on the previous slide. We received a lot of comments about roadway classifications during the public review period for the general plan and the EIR. So I wanted to just take a minute to review what these roadway classifications are and how they're used. This map in the general plan is really based on data that Caltrans uses for what it calls the functional classification of roadways. And Caltrans defines those classes based on things like average daily traffic, how many access points are on the roadway, what's the speed limit of the roadway, how many lanes does it have, those kinds of things. This is not a city designation. It is just reflecting the classifications that Caltrans currently uses. And it is just a categorization system, so it doesn't change the amount of traffic that the roadway, that uses the roadway, but it does influence how Caltrans allocates maintenance funds. However, given the high level of public concern that we heard during the public review process, we have recommended the addition of a new action to request Caltrans and Federal Highway Administration update roadway classifications based on the city's complete streets plan so that those outside agency classifications more closely match the city and the community's vision for how these roads should be characterized. I also wanted to touch on the final environmental impact report since your recommendation tonight will also include a recommendation to the council to certify the EIR. Just briefly, the EIR is prepared consistent with CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, which requires in preparation of the environmental impact report for a project like the general plan. Then we are reaching the end of the EIR process. As you can see on the graphic on this slide, I mentioned that we had a 45-day public comment period on the draft EIR. We are now presenting the final EIR, which consolidates all of the comments received on the draft EIR, as well as responses to each one of those comments. So CEQA is intended to be an informational and public process. So you can see the green here, all the opportunities for public input, including tonight at Planning Commission, and in March when city council will consider the certification of the final EIR. The EIR covers the general plan, including its land use map, the amount of development expected to occur under the draft general plan 2040, and potential environmental impacts of the goals, policies, and actions in the plan, as well as the technical update to the climate action plan that we did to ensure that the climate action plan adopted in 2020 remains consistent with the city's general plan. The EIR looks at these environmental topics listed on the slide and for all of the bullet points with an asterix after them, those are impacts that are found to be less than significant because the general plan, as well as other regulations, help avoid or lessen an impact. You can see bold for air quality, noise, wildfire, and the cumulative impacts for those topics. Those are topics for which the EIR found potential significant and unavoidable impacts. I mentioned that the final EIR includes responses to comments. It also includes any changes or revisions that were necessary to the draft EIR. So we have added information about the Baywood and Yoshiko Yamanucci Historic House Designation requests, earthquake required zones of investigation from the California Geological Society, more about consistency with Measure Y. We updated all the references to goals, policies, and actions so that they would stay consistent with the revised general plan. And we updated some figures to make sure that we have the most current and correct data and legends and titles on those figures. None of the changes that we made to the draft EIR constitute significant new information. And so we are not required to recirculate the draft EIR and we are moving forward with the final EIR. The EIR is required to identify potential environmental impacts and we did identify some that are significant and unavoidable. But the EIR does not preclude the city from approving the general plan, even though it might have impacts. However, when it does have impacts, we need to consider a statement of overriding considerations. And the role of that statement is really to just explain why it is, in the opinion of the city, acceptable to acknowledge that the project will have impacts because it also offers substantial benefits that outweigh those potential impacts. There's a much longer list of these, but just as an example, some of the potential benefits include support for local businesses, making sure that the city has a legally adequate general plan, supporting multimodal transportation, directing city investments to equity priority communities, protecting open spaces and natural habitats, prioritizing the preparation of a climate change adaptation plan, and establishing clear actions for community safety and disaster recovery. So all of those are important benefits of adopting the general plan that would outweigh the potential impacts. And then finally, we also heard during the public review period that the folks were interested to understand better about what the potential fiscal impacts of the general plan might be on the city's fiscal health and the feasibility of how the general plan might perform. So we did do a fiscal analysis based on the most current general plan land use map and the associated projected build out that I showed earlier. That fiscal analysis included interviews with departmental staff and it's based on the current budget. It assumed, it did conclude that the general plan would generate annual revenues for the city of over $15 million. This is again at build out if the general plan builds out in the way that's calculated and that would be, of course, by 2040 or potentially beyond. The economic development policy objectives, such as focusing development along the El Camino Real Corridor and near transit, could be accomplished based on the findings of EPS who performed the fiscal analysis. And with that, I'm going to hand it back to Zach to talk about staff's work ahead to implement the general plan.
Great, thank you, Joanna. So general plan adoption, what comes next? And so really that then moves transitions to implementation. And so obviously we have a very significant to-do list or actions that are included in the general plan. I forget the exact number, but it's in the hundreds. And so each one of these actions will take a certain level of resource and staff involvement in order to accomplish. And there's a process that will go along with each of them. So this is the blueprint, our kind of to-do list over the next 20 years. So examples of actions that we'll be moving forward with that are included in the general plan, preparation of a comprehensive adaptation plan to address, respond to climate change risks, updating and maintaining our historic resources inventory, and coordination with our regional part, ongoing coordination with our regional partners such as Caltrain or Sam Trans. There we go. And, and so with that really comes, we have to prioritize and really a key piece is, where is the available budget to get it done? And so we will be developing an implementation plan that will really kind of help guide policy decision-making moving forward. But ultimately, we'll be working, starting with our city departments and then moving forward to input and direction from council. When do each of these actions get prioritized and when is there funding available to move forward? So some might be local prioritization, some might be grant opportunity. So there's various avenues that could help initiate or get these moving. And ultimately, we are limited by the staff resources that are available to support them. So obviously, not every one of these actions can be completed in the first few years. But the goal is our implementation plan will allow for a blueprint that shows when we'll be moving forward with each of these. And one of the actions is to establish a dashboard so we can kind of see where progress is occurring in these, in these various channels that, that have been identified over the next 20 years. And then also, as was noted earlier, a big component of general plan 24 is its relationship with Measure Y. So Measure Y is a voter-approved initiative that limits building heights, densities, and intensities throughout the city. And there's been an ongoing community conversation that kind of led to the creation of the study areas as kind of a compromise approach that where we could focus growth and change that would potentially exceed the limits of Measure Y. And then that would allow for the rest of the city to remain at levels that are consistent with the Measure Y limits. And so ultimately, as reflected in our land use map. And I'll move to the next slide here. We do, we have created land use categories within the medium two and high that do include heights, densities, intensities that go beyond the Measure Y limits. And, and so what this does is allows us to plan for the growth in housing that we anticipate needing over the next 20 years while also balancing and respecting community input that we want, we don't want to overburden our existing single-family neighborhoods. And so this is really shooting to create that balance and then ultimately chart a path forward for a Measure Y amendment that would be brought forward before the voters. And so we also do include policy language that does specify that even with adoption of this general plan, any difference between the general plan and Measure Y would defer to Measure Y and that until such time that either Measure Y is amended. to Measure Y, and that until such time that either Measure Y is amended or it sunsets, we would be relying on that to set the limits where they're established. So moving forward, we, as noted, we do have this policy that acknowledges the growth limits set by Measure Y. And then following adoption, we would be working with the City Council to explore potential ballot language and then with a target of placing a ballot initiative on the November 2024 for the voters to consider. So now, moving back to tonight's meeting, next steps as you move into your discussion. We do want to acknowledge the community input that has come in more recently. Since publication of the Agenda Report, we have received a number of written public comments. Some of those comments raised concerns about the amount of new development that's being allowed by the general plan. One letter focused on needing more details related to how we clean up downtown and attract new businesses. The owner of the Hillsdale Mall sites submitted a letter raising some concerns about the story definition and it being tied to an average of 11 feet per story, which could impact office and commercial development. The Housing Leadership Council submitted a comment recommending that the High Two land use designation be reinstituted. We heard from the owners of the Bay Shore Corporate Commons over at Onanflit Boulevard. They had initially requested a land use designation of mixed-use high, which is what is currently on their site, but they're now coming forward with a request to redesignate as a mixed-use medium one. We have also heard some comments related to historic preservation, including from the Heritage Alliance, and that focused on additional protections for structures over 50 years old and more explicitly identifying contributors as historic resources. With regard to the story definition, the intent of that was to provide an understanding and kind of translate, when you're looking at a story, how does that translate to feet? But really get away from the general plan, setting dimensional height limits, and really that's really more the role that the zoning ordinance plays. And so the intent was letting stories then inform the final height limits that go into the zoning ordinance, and that definition was kind of meant to help the public and readers understand how that could relate, but it wasn't intended to limit. And so if, as drafted, staff feels that that is consistent with the intent, but if the commission is interested in looking at clarifying language, we do have some proposed modifications that might help make that intent more clear. So this is available, and we can come back to it if you're interested. And then the other thing, we did have some verbal communications with the owners of the parcels that are currently developed with office buildings. This is over on Burrell Avenue and Beauvais Road. One of the things that happened when the office designations, the height limits were reduced, initially, the office medium had a height range that was aligned with those existing buildings. But now with that reduction, office medium actually has a height range that falls below those current buildings. Right now, we have several office buildings that are, that range between five and seven stories in height. And so to align the general plan land use designations with the existing uses that are out there, this isn't looking to intensify, but recognize what's out there so we don't create an unintended, non-conforming situation, we are recommending that this grouping of parcels here be re-categorized to be an office-high land use designation. So moving forward after tonight's hearing and Planning Commission recommendation, we'll move forward to City Council for adoption hearings in March where they'll consider certification of the final EIR and adoption of General Plan 2040. And with that adoption, that would include rescinding General Plan 2030 as General Plan 2040 would replace it. So for tonight's recommendation, we are recommending that a Planning Commission adopt a resolution to recommend that the City Council certify the general plan's final environmental impact report and adopt Strive Samiteo General Plan 2040 based on the listed findings. And we do want to note that we have a draft resolution included in your agenda packet, and as exhibits, it does include the two draft City Council resolutions, which contain the justification and findings to support this recommendation. We also want to note that this is one of the documents tied to Exhibit B, which is this environmental impact report certification. We did provide an updated statement of overriding considerations. It did not change, but what we did was we added more information to support each of the findings to justify the overall statement of overriding considerations. And we're happy to answer any questions if you may have them about that specific document. But this is draft, and it'll stay in draft form after this meeting tonight, but this does include information to support your action here tonight. And so with this, that does conclude staff's presentation. We are available to answer any clarifying questions you may have. I do also want to note that in addition to our team here this evening in person, we also have a number of our consultants available online if you have any specific questions there. That includes Erica Schultz, our historic consultant, Seth Myers, our consultant for air quality and noise, Davian Stefanics for traffic, and then also Bethany Lopez with Public Works for any related questions you might have there. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Zach and Joanne. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission that you would like to bring up now, or do we go directly to public comment?
I have two questions. Okay. They're pretty simple. Can you remind me when Measure Y sunsets? Maybe you covered that, but I didn't catch it.
It sunsets in 2030.
2030, okay. And then my second question is, we had letters and comments about, related to the historic resources section, and there was, one of the comments was specifically that it should include the word contributors. And I guess I'm unclear on what's missing or what that's about, and I'm wondering if it's possible to point that out to me. I just didn't understand the significance of that. Do you want me to see?
I shouldn't.
Okay.
So I also can provide a response to that as well, and then also Erica Schultz may want to weigh in as well. Overall, the general plan in our historic, in our community design and historic resources element includes a policy that defines what is a historic resource, and we do note that historic districts are historic resources. And what are, the basis for that is that a district is composed of a variety of historic resources, including contributors, but by themselves, a contributor isn't necessarily considered a historic resource. It's part of that historic district context. And so that's why the definition as drafted does not explicitly include contributors because that would potentially elevate them to an individually eligible historic resource status.
Great. Thank you. That helps. That's all my questions, basically.
To the chair, thank you. I'll go next because I also have a question about the definition of historic resources. So, and I apologize for not sending this question in advance. I was looking through some of the public comments and some of the communications around the definition, and there is an email that you sent in November where you said the current definition of historic resources was developed based on input from the historic consultant supporting the general plan update effort and does not include a specific reference to districts because that was council's direction last fall when they were reviewing the general plan's draft goals, policies, and actions. But I noticed that the definition proposed in policy CD 5.3 does in fact include the word district, and so I was curious what the council directed as part of their feedback last fall and if the direction from the council was not to include the word district.
If, the intent there was more contributors. Districts are, would be, as a whole, would be considered a historic resource, but contributors as part of that district are represented within that definition without an explicit call-out. And so based on our consultation with our historic consultant, as well as we do have other historic consultants that we're working with within the city, and to align with state and federal practices, we did not explicitly call out contributors. However, there's local policy prerogative if you want to elevate protection. So there's a local choice to be made if we want to or not, but in terms of aligning with state and federal, by identifying districts as a historic resource, that includes the contributors that could exist within that district.
Okay. So just to make sure I understand, you're saying that when this was discussed at council, their request not to include a specific reference to districts was specifically about contributors and not the idea of a district as a whole?
Yeah, that's my understanding, and we had discussed it both for, under the goals, policies, and actions the year before, and then more recently when this came to council this past fall. And it wasn't about districts so much as whether to explicitly reference contributors in the definition or not. And so we had heard input, community input from that, and then that was teed up to council and their direction was they, they were, didn't feel comfortable including it at that time. They could revisit it, and I know we are moving forward with the discussion about historic resources and preservation here in the community. So they'll have a chance to revisit that when it goes back before them this March.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But then it's listed, you know, item number seven on page 290, you know, in the list of all the changes. It is listed there as added contributors to the action, so that confused me, but I guess that's just historical, not historical, that's just past history of the item.
To the chair. That was going to be one of my topics for discussion.
Yeah. So, okay. Kind of confusing.
Are you talking about the addition of contributors for the objective, historic objective design standards? So in that context, we wanted to include them because that's an important component. How does a contributor, what should a contributor, what design considerations should factor into how a contributor is treated within a district? And so in that context, yes, there might be a different threshold for a contributor as opposed to an eligible historic resource.
Okay.
And then I think most notably, when do Secretary of the Interior standards apply and when would they not necessarily be applicable?
Thanks. That helps clarify all of that for me.
Great.
To the chair. I have a question about, just generally, we had a, we had a comment from one of the property owners about changing their designation from mixed-use medium to, or mixed-use high to mixed-use medium. And there's, the general plan provides ranges for like, oh, this would, this type of land use designation would be, you know, say 19 to 45 units per acre as an example. What does that mean? Does that mean that there's a floor to what's developable? Or is that just providing a visualization of what might be zoned there?
So there have been discussions about if you want to set minimum densities, but that's not in the general plan. That would be a separate policy discussion. Within the general plan and within each land use designation, that range, so say if you're looking at the high, which says 100 to 130, that means that a zone district that's, has that land use designation would be setting a maximum in that 100 to 130. That's not saying that you have to do a minimum of 100 units an acre. It's setting the ceiling. And so that range, so if you have a bigger range, that means that maybe we could get a bigger variety of housing types, from say townhomes to higher density, say condos or apartments, but it's not setting a floor. And so that's important for all of the districts. That range represents the maximum density that as the zoning would set to align with the general plan, but it wouldn't be a minimum.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I had would, you showed some language regarding heights, the height example or the reference to height for a floor in the presentation. Can you go back to that? I just want to reread what, and make sure I understand what were you, what you were showing.
And so this was regard to the definition?
It was, it was referencing the letter from the Bohannon Group? Yes, this was.
Was this the?
Yes, yes. Okay, so the term to define, now is this in a, what, where is this pulled from in the general plan? Is that?
So this is referenced in two places. It's referenced in the land use element, but the definition itself is within the general plan glossary.
Okay. Because I know on page 40, there's general plan land use designations and land use map, and it says that the general plan assumes each story is an average of 11 feet, provided that the applicable overall height limit is not exceeded. How does, so are you showing like a change that you're suggesting to what's currently in the general plan, or is this what's in?
So this is, this is definitely not in the general plan. What this is, is if Planning Commission is interested in seeing a change to the definition, saying, you know what, we think this could be better clarified, this is some potential language you could consider. Our position is the language there is intended to be more representative of how does a story translate to height? If I'm trying to understand, well, what would be the height of eight stories or seven stories? But it's not intended to set a limit. That dimensional height limit is set within the zoning code, and it would correlate with the range of stories specified in the general plan. So you could say, you know, we're okay with the definition. We're comfortable that that's not going to impede how the height limits are set in the zoning ordinance, or if you feel it could be better defined, this is a potential way to better define it. Or you could go differently. So this is just a potential modification if Planning Commission wants to respond to that comment and make a recommendation.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I don't want to move into comments. I'm just, yeah. Those are my two questions.
To the chair. Thank you, Zach, and to the team, stay on this for a second. The, it says here, the, in text that I think is not proposed to change, the general plans, general plan assumes each story is an average of 11 feet. Is it assuming that, like for what purpose is it assuming that? Is it purely to provide the layperson with an understanding of, call it dimensional measurement? Or is it, you know, in what context is it assuming? What is it using that assumption for?
So it's, right now, with Measure Y, it's, it has a height limit that's in feet, 55 feet. And so as the general plan has discussed height, we wanted to move away from being as explicit within the general plan, knowing that that's really more of an exercise where we define it within the zoning code. And so by using stories, it's not defining a specific height measurement, but saying, all right, if we're, what is a story level that we're comfortable with, and then we'll use that within the general plan to inform the height limits that are in the zoning code. However, given that there is such a focus on the dimensional height, we wanted to give the layperson or anyone that's looking at the general plan an idea to say, well, what is seven stories? What is six stories? What would that mean in feet? And so that was kind of what this average would imply. And this is also because we do have story recommendations outside the study areas where we are looking at keeping consistent with Measure Y. And so 11 feet, five stories, which is roughly what can be done right now, equals 55 feet. So that also kind of aligns with that 55-foot height limit that exists around the city under Measure Y. So that was, and 11 is oftentimes, and definitely, if you're looking at commercial or office, you're going to be looking at plate heights that are taller than 11 feet. But also, your plate heights vary. Your first floor plate height might be 15, 18, 20 feet for, to allow for flexibility, where as you go up, your plate heights might reduce. And so averaging out, that was really the intended, but it really was just to provide a comparative, so what does a story equal in terms of feet, but not create a limit.
Okay. Thank you. I don't mean to jump into that one too deep, but this was trying to understand. So it sounds like, to a certain degree, it's sort of letting people have a shorthand where they think five stories equals okay with Measure Y, give or take 11 feet per floor. Is it, is it kind of that as well, or is it really just dimensional measurement in a vacuum?
Yeah, there, I think there's a little bit of both. And I think in the real world, we, the commission just had a study session on a project near downtown, and in that case, they were looking at office and maybe commercial. And in that case, within that height limit, they were looking at three stories because obviously they're looking at much taller plate heights. So, and so that's where we don't want the dimension here to be a limit. We will then have a subsequent discussion as we update our zoning ordinance about what the appropriate height limit should be, and they should be informed by the store, the number of stories, not a specific height that's associated with each story, at least for this 11 feet. That's why we say an average, but ultimately, we want the zoning code to kind of define what's the appropriate height limit for each district.
Okay, thank you. I think because everyone else was asking some of the same questions I have, I'm down to one. Can you go to the slide with the, it's called like? I have, I'm down to one. Can you go to the slide with the, it's called like, it's about Measure Y. It's like how Measure Y is included in Plan, General Plan 2040. And it's got the map. This one, thank you. Is, am I reading this right, that the colors on this map correlate to almost like parcel by parcel, where the conflicts with Measure Y would occur?
So yeah, you can see here, these are the primarily medium two and high one, or now it's just high. So these are the ones that have heights and densities that go beyond the Measure Y limits.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. That's, thank you for having that. That's super helpful, I think. Through the chair, those are my only clarifying questions.
Great, thank you. With that, we can go to public comment?
Yes, right now, we have, we have five public commentators. Four are currently in person. If anybody on Zoom wants to comment, please raise your hand at this time. Chairbiter, we're going to start with our in-person commentators. Ken Abreu, you can come up to the microphone.
Yes, it's three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, a lot of been work, good work has been done on this general plan. And I really applaud the staff and everybody for what they've put together. It's the consultants and so forth. It's got a lot of good stuff in there. And I think after five and a half years, it should have a lot of good stuff in there and all the effort we've put into it. I think we want to make sure that when this thing goes ahead, it doesn't fall short of all the effort and time and so forth that we've put in there. And one of the key things we've mentioned in our comments, the Sierra Club, is the need to make sure that we get, you know, heights and densities and open space to have successful developments. A lot of our comments have focused as an example on the Reimagine Hillsdale examples, and the example number three, which is really the one that we've mentioned in our comments, takes advantage of those heightened density to really give an opportunity for a lot of open space, parks, safe bike lanes, restoring a creek and all that sort of stuff. You know, with the elimination of high two, the question arises, can you still do that? And if you can't, you've really got a loss there. You've lost the opportunity to do something really magnificent for the city that would be a model for all around, I think, the country. And in exploring that, I've talked to a lot of different people, and I haven't got a straight answer yet as to if you don't have high two, could something like that example three still be done at Hillsdale, Reimagine Hillsdale, which is probably going to be the one big project that might go ahead in this timeframe. And I've heard people say, well, with density bonus, and with overlays, and with this and that, they could probably still do something like that, but maybe not. I don't know. But we should make dang sure, before we approve this general plan, that something like that can happen, either by reinstating high two, or making sure that we have the flexibility within the general plan as it's stated, along with all the state laws that have come to play over the last year, to do something like that. So that would be my one comment here. It's a very good general plan, but if you don't get to that point where we can really do the outstanding stuff, five and a half years is going to kind of be a bit of a, you know, kind of a disappointment, I think. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ken.
Our next public commentator is Jennifer Rank. Jennifer, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Chairbiter and members of the Planning Commission. Congrats on this big milestone tonight. I know it's been a long, a long haul, and I've been watching along the way. So your efforts have not gone unnoticed. My name is Jennifer Rank. I'm a land use partner at Shepherd Mullen, and I represent the ownership of Bay Shore Corporate Commons, located at 1720 South Amphlet, right next to the San Mateo Marriott, as you guys probably know. We submitted a letter for your consideration tonight that sets forth our second request, actually, for mixed use medium one, as the site's ultimate land use designation for in the general plan 2040 that will be adopted in March. My clients are very supportive of future housing on the site, and supported the prior change to the mixed use high designation in 2022, because it allowed the EIR to analyze the maximum build out potential for the site. Now, ownership faces different market conditions than two years ago, higher interest rates, and construction costs, tighter lending, and the cooling of the local office market. Therefore, the mixed use high designation, with its minimum density of 100 units per acre, which in our view doesn't read as ambiguous in the general plan. I mean, in the charts, there are minimums and maximums. So, you know, we're concerned about how that would get construed in the future. So with this minimum density, it does not provide a realistic framework for a multifamily or a mixed use project that can be financed and built in this challenging economic environment. This is why we respectfully request that the Planning Commission recommend redesignating the site to mixed use medium one, which will provide more flexibility for residential uses, including both lower and higher density housing opportunities. The mixed use medium one designation will allow ownership to accelerate the redevelopment of the site with housing and community benefits, while improving the site's potential to support the city's housing element goals during this RENA cycle. Thank you for your time tonight, and for the important work that you were doing for the future of San Mateo. Again, we request that you consider the mixed use medium one designation for the Bay Shore Corporate Commons. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Light. David, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is David Light, and I live on South Fremont Street. I'm especially concerned about how the circulation element and street classifications affect my immediate neighborhood. The street classifications for Fifth and Ninth Avenues are now called minor arterials. This means that Fifth and Ninth Avenues are now allowed to have 3,000 to 14,000 trips a day. This also means that there are now a total of five minor arterials designated in a very small area in our central neighborhood, between Fifth and Ninth Avenues and South Amphlet and South Delaware, in addition to one major collector on Grant Avenue, which allows 1,000 to 6,300 trips a day. And just to quickly put this in perspective, between Fourth and Ninth, there is no Sixth or Eighth Avenue. So there's basically all the avenues in my immediate neighborhood are minor arterials, except for Seventh Avenue. And to me, this appears to be poor planning, with our streets aligned to Caltrans and Federal Highway Administration guidelines, rather than to what is best for our neighborhood. These changes will result in severe traffic impacts to the families living in our neighborhood. We would like to request that the minor arterials and major collectors be added to the neighborhood traffic management program to reduce the cut through and speeding traffic. And also Kiku Crossing Garage with 700 vehicles will be opening soon, and this will surely impact traffic in our already busy streets. I'm an avid bicyclist, and it's hard to imagine 14,000 cars a day on a narrow street, tree lined street like Fifth Avenue. This classification seems too high for a very narrow street that is a bike boulevard. The street classification should be reduced to a local street for the safety of the bicyclist, since it is only a two lane shared street with parking on both sides. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Our last in-person speaker is Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Chairman Ebnerter and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watanuki. And there are two new street classifications, as David Light had mentioned. It's called the minor arterial, with a maximum of 14,000 cars a day, and a major collector with a maximum of 6,300 cars a day. They're a total of five minor arterials and one major collector in the central neighborhood. And this could bring a maximum of 76,000 cars a day through our neighborhood. And this increase in traffic has not been analyzed in the EIR. A new bike boulevard is proposed for Fifth Avenue from Delaware to South Amphlet. And we'd like to make our narrow street safer. We'd like to see a street that's dedicated to bicyclists and pedestrians on Fifth Avenue, and make this a local street with 80 to 700 trips per day. We have more than 75 driveways on Fifth Avenue, and Fifth Avenue is only six blocks long. It's not three quarters of a mile. Please add minor arterials and major collectors in the NTMP for the reduction of cut through traffic and reducing speed. We'd like to preserve the community character in our older neighborhoods, and we'd like to add conservation districts along with historic districts. The inclusion of neighborhood zones in the objective design guidelines will help maintain our neighborhood character. The Yoshiko Yamanouchi House, which includes a family home, katsura structure and gardens at 107 East Fifth, was recently nominated as a state and federal historic site. And unfortunately, the EIR did not address the effects of the general plan traffic and air pollution on the Yoshiko Yamanouchi House. Please add contributors to historic districts to the definition of historic resources, since there are multiple buildings and gardens on our site. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Our next speaker is over Zoom, Kohar. You can go ahead and unmute. Kohar, you can go ahead and unmute now.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Good evening, Chairbiter, members of the Planning Commission, and city staff. My name is Kohar Kohjayan, and I am on Zoom tonight representing the joint venture ownership for the Hillsdale Shopping Center. First, we'd like to congratulate you all on this huge milestone this evening. The 2040 general plan has been a multi-year process, and as someone who has been on multiple sides of it, I can really appreciate all the public service hours that have gone into preparing this vision document for San Mateo. So thank you all for your hard work. Thanks also for the opportunity to speak tonight. As we were reviewing the general plan, we noticed that on page 40 and page 241, as Zach also brought up, a reference to an assumed height for stories. We sent in the letter last week, sharing our concerns, and wanted you all to know that we have been, you know, working really hard and engaging the community to develop a world-class development here at Hillsdale. And in order to have cutting edge design and architectural viability, having a range of heights based on use is an absolute must. All the residential uses may be able to accommodate an assumed 11 foot story. Most commercial buildings will need a minimum of 14 to 16 feet, depending on the use, and a minimum of at least 18 feet for viable and vibrant ground floor retail, which we're really hoping to achieve as a part of our development. An 11 foot average is a hindrance to development, and we are concerned that this definition will be incorrectly interpreted down the road. In order to retain flexibility for various uses and land use types, and enable a world-class development like we're planning, we request that the Planning Commission recommend city council removal of this reference in the general plan, both on page 40 and 241, and rely on stakeholder outreach, as you've done a great job getting to this point, to help define heights in the zoning code when it is updated. So thank you for your time tonight, and nice to see you all. And thanks again for all the effort going into preparing this document for the city of San Mateo.
Thank you, Kohar.
Our last speaker is Maureen. Maureen, you can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening. Fifth Avenue is the street I use as a safe haven to ride my bike downtown.
Maureen, I'm so sorry, it cut out. Can you restart?
Thanks. So good evening, everybody. My name is Maureen Kilo, and I live in the central neighborhood. I have a concern for the new classification called minor arterials for the Fifth and Ninth Avenues. Fifth Avenue is the street I use as a safe haven to ride my bike downtown. I typically have my dog Rosie at my side in a carrier. And for neighbors walking or riding, Fifth Avenue is a safer way to travel to and from downtown than Fourth Avenue. As you can imagine, traveling on foot or bike on Fourth Avenue is treacherous. So I'm concerned that if Fifth Avenue is now a minor arterial, it could have up to 14,000 vehicles a day. So there should be considerations for a local street classification on Fifth Avenue with fewer cars, designed primarily for the bicyclists and pedestrians. These new classifications of minor arterial and major collector need to be included in the neighborhood traffic management plan as soon as possible. We have no protections for the additional traffic, noise, and diesel particulate impacts in the 2040 general plan. I am very concerned with the sixth grade separation proposed for the First, Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth, and Ninth Avenues, and feel that these grade separations will only bring more cut through and speeding traffic to all our neighborhood streets. We need, we need to protect our many pre-war homes, which are over 100 years old, with this much additional traffic. A conservation district will help maintain our neighborhood character. We need to reduce the vehicular traffic and make the streets safer for the bicyclists, pedestrians, which include the elderly and families with children. Traffic calming is long overdue. Please make it a priority. Thank you so much for your time and for all the hard work you guys have done on this plan.
Thank you, Maureen.
Chairbiter, we have no more public speakers.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment period, and please take a five minute break. And then we'll address the public's questions and concerns. Bring the meeting back to order and address public concerns and questions, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair of Nutter. So I would like to call on Bethany Lopez with Public Works to speak too, because we did hear a number of comments related to roadway classifications.
Hi there. So as mentioned in the presentation, the roadway classifications that the city is utilizing align with the roadway classifications that are identified by the Federal Highway Administration and Caltrans. The Federal Highway Administration, along with Caltrans, identifies roadway classifications for the entire state of California. So if there's a desire to change these, we do have to go through a process to appeal to Caltrans and to the Federal Highway Administration in order to do so. Aligning with these roadway classifications is a requirement in order for us to qualify for certain types of roadway maintenance funds. And so we are not making any modifications to any of the roadway classifications. We're simply aligning with the roadway classifications that have been identified. However, in response to a lot of the feedback that we've received, we have implemented, or excuse me, added two new actions. As mentioned in the presentation, we did add one to take a look at roadway classifications in the general plan and align them after the completion of the Complete Streets Plan, make those appeals to the Caltrans, excuse me, Federal Highway Administration to recommend changes per recommendations in the Complete Streets Plan. And then there's also another recommendation in the circulation element in the Actions, Action C 6.9, which is to evaluate the possibility of including major and minor collectors and arterials, which is a recommend, or a request that sounds like was being made in the public comment. And so that action already is in the general plan actions. So that is something that we'll be looking at when we go through and make the updates for our neighborhood traffic management policy.
Thank you for that input, Bethany. And I think that's really the important point, is we've definitely heard this community concern, and we're aligned with that approach and recognize that many of these streets aren't necessarily designed to handle the capacity in that range. But as part of one of our requirements, we do have to acknowledge this map that's prepared both at the state and federal levels. And so we do have an action that we'll be specifically looking at, how do we develop the data then to support requests to these entities to change these classifications, to better align with how they actually function? So we definitely want to acknowledge this map needs to be in here, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's what we want to see on these streets. And so that's really the important point here, and we'll be working to get their maps better aligned with how our streets function and how we want them to function moving forward. There were also some comments related to land use and the density range. The intent is the min-max load in the land use element, there is a table that identifies the density range for each land use category. And so the intent was the min-max maximum density, but to ensure that that's clear, the staff recommendation there would be to remove min-max and put maximum density range. And so that's clear. That's the range that sets the upper limit. We do also want to acknowledge there is a policy in the land use element that does identify an interest in achieving higher densities or closer to maximum densities when you're in close proximity to a transit station for new residential development. This change wouldn't necessarily conflict with that. That would be a separate policy initiative, and that would be for specific residential projects that are, say, in close proximity to a Caltrans station, where we would want to make sure we're realizing closer to a maximum densities, given the opportunity to provide housing close to transit. We do also, there was a couple of comments related to historic, and our historic consultant is available if there's any specific questions that the commission has. We also do have our other technical consultants available, so if there's any specific technical questions that you have, it would be great to share those with them now, and then, once we move into discussion, we can allow them to sign off. So those were some of the major comments raised, and we did also hear a comment regarding the story definition. We had spoken to that earlier, and happy to speak to it further, or if you want to look at the staff recommended language or consider other alternatives.
So, thank you, Zach. As it pertains to height and densities, and Mr. Abreu's question of with the elimination of HI-2, would that jeopardize the open air component here in the city? And have there been any studies that have been done to say what effect the elimination of HI-2 would have specifically on open space?
We have not done any studies that this affect. I think so much of those assumptions really have to be more site-specific to understand the opportunities for open space, light, and air. Also, the HI-2, this has been an iterative process, and so this is more the evolution to get the land use map to kind of its final place that is most aligned with where the community wants to see the community grow over the next 20 years. And so it's more of, this was a range that was added thoroughly discussed. The HI-2 was kept in during the draft so that the general plan EIR could evaluate it. But the assumption was there was always going to be a discussion about whether it should be ultimately retained, and then based on council direction, it was removed. And so as part of that discussion, we weren't doing any subsequent studies to look specifically at whether it was there or not. But the density ranges are aligned with the associated heights, and so we anticipate these projects would still intend to or try to meet our open space requirements or light and air requirements, and balance that need for density with also providing opportunities for open space. But we have not looked specifically at that HI-2 category in that regard.
Okay. Again, piggyback on Ken's comment, and also outreach as part of the procedure that, or process that has been done by the staff and the city. I was hoping to see two surveys, the results of two surveys that were done for the city as it pertains to heights and densities, and the demographics behind those and the results. Can you discuss those surveys, specifically around the HI-2 proposals?
Yes, I can in the general sense, and I think it's always important to note that these surveys are most representative of that time and place. And as time moves on, circumstances change and evolve, and as understandings get more specific, the understanding that parameters change, and so maybe a survey that was done in 2020 or 2022 might not be as directly applicable as in 2023 or in 2024. So that's why we weren't necessarily carrying that information forward. But in general, in 2020 and 2022, we did, as part of an overall community survey, ask the community questions about heights and density ranges. And so this was kind of up to 12 stories, an eight-to-12-story range. And there was, at those points, a majority, or a significant majority of folks did express support for those if it meant increased ability to provide open space or meet state housing requirements. Then in 2023, we kind of asked more specific questions that looked specifically at eight stories, 10 stories, and 12 stories, because initially we had kind of the place types menu with kind of low, medium, and high, with high having an eight-to-12-story range. But then over time, we've kind of refined that as we've developed our land use map. And so with this most recent survey, we asked more specific questions. And so in general, the community noted that there was around 70, there was a highest support for eight stories, and then it dropped down incrementally to a 10-story height limit and an eight-story height limit. The other thing that we had done was to calibrate these height limits, knowing that a project could ask for an additional story or two as part of a concession with a density, under state density bonus law. And so there was direction to calibrate these height ranges to account for that. So if, say, there was comfort with a 10-story limit or a 12-story limit, maybe we then calibrate our height limits at eight and 10 stories, knowing that they could still go beyond. So we were aligning, if we were asking these questions, this would be consistent with what the community might actually see when it's developed. So that information was presented to the council this past fall. The survey consultant who conducted them also noted that because there was a different, the questions were asked differently, you couldn't directly compare the questions asked in '20 or '22 to those asked in '23 because they were different ranges asked. But in general, that's kind of an overview of the surveys and their survey outcomes.
Thank you. So overall, the higher heights and densities were favorable in the surveys or not?
They were favorable, but there's always a margin of error, and as the consultant noted, you have to account for certain margins going down, and if you want to build in a buffer to ensure that if you bring a ballot measure forward, it has success, you want to account for that in whatever height limit you have. And so that's where council looked at. There was more support if you're looking at eight and 10 stories. So if you have an eight-story limit, and then maybe a project can get some additional stories under density bonus, that's in the eight-to-10 range, as opposed to if you set a 10-story high limit where you could see projects up to 12 stories under density bonus. Now you're getting very close to whether or not a measure could succeed, and I think that could have been a factor that, or I think was a factor, that led to the ultimate recommendation they made.
Okay. One last question on the surveys. What were the demographics of the surveys? Were they citywide, or were they, you know, brought to certain neighborhoods or certain demographics? How did that work into it?
That was the other piece that really, it made it hard to compare the most recent survey with past ones. The most recent one was targeted to likely voters, because thinking ahead to a ballot initiative that goes, in November of 2024, we wanted to hear from likely voters in that survey. Past surveys were more community-wide.
And so a likely voter would be more of a homeowner or a renter, or both?
I can't speak to that breakdown, but the likely voter is based on past elections and how likely they are to participate in those elections.
And even with, but even with the likely voters being targeted, if you will, in this survey, they were still supportive of the higher densities?
Much slimmer margins, yes.
A smaller margin, but they still were.
Yes.
Through the chair. I think the number you may be looking for is 59% or in support of 10 stories.
Thank you.
I think there's a little bit of confusion, because I think you misspoke at one point, and you said eight stories, when I think, or eight or 10, when I think you meant 12. So is that why you're asking the question?
I'm just trying to clarify. It has always been a little bit of a confusion for me and for people in the public to understand where we have moved with this discussion. And I just need some clarification myself, and the public has asked me numerous times, why have we dropped the height limits?
Through the chair. I've looked at these surveys so many times, I feel like I have them memorized at this point. The 2022 survey was a community-wide survey, and it was demographically representative of the community. And I believe, if I remember correctly, 63% of respondents said that they supported 12 stories. But the 2023 survey was likely voters, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but I do remember a demographic overview at the top of that survey that noted that the demographics of those survey respondents are not quite as exact to the demographic of the community as large.
Great, thank you.
And just to kind of clarify to Commissioner Williams' point, the questions asked in the 2023 survey were eight stories, 10 stories, and 12 stories. So those were the three height points that were surveyed on.
Great. And I think I wanted to address the Housing Leadership Council letter that they sent in, I think, yesterday. And it was mentioned in the staff report, but another component that I think was key in part of their discussion was, on their second-to-last paragraph, they state, "Even with a successful general plan update, almost 70% of San Mateo's residential land outright bans affordable homes with exclusionary zoning." And yes, they are supporting the higher two, but they're also acknowledging that we have kept 70% of our city out of the mix to address our housing shortages. And I think that's an important component to remember. Those are my questions, and/or brief statement at this point. Do we have other questions that the public had proposed, or are we ready to go into our discussions?
Yes, through the chair. So I just want to clarify what was mentioned about road classifications, and it sounded like something may have changed about petitioning or going to our higher government state or to our higher government state or federal about reclassifying some roads that are currently classified, minor arterials. Is that what I heard? Just want to make sure that's what I heard tonight. And this might be a question for, for what Bethany's mentioned, but I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly.
So, I think what I had mentioned was that there is a process by which we're allowed to petition Caltrans and the FHWA to make changes based on data provided to them. So, data to support the volume in particular, but then other aerobic characteristics. And so, we are looking to make those changes based on information from the Complete Streets Plan, following its completion. So, there is a recommended action in the general plan to that effect, to go ahead and submit that petition to make those changes. But, we're not currently proposing any changes with the general plan at this point.
Okay. All right. That's what I thought I heard. So, do you know, and I don't want to put you on the spot, do you know where in the general plan that is mentioned?
Sorry about that. It's in the roadway section. And actually, it is Action C 6.13, if I remember correctly.
Okay, I'm close. All right, "Street Classification Update: Request that Caltrans and the Federal Highway Administration update their functional roadway classifications based on the roadway network framework defined by the Complete Streets Plan." Okay. Thank you. That was the only question I had.
And I, I just brought up the map, and that, that Action 61, 613, which does, does show our intended action following the, the Complete Streets Plan, which will provide the extra data and information necessary to make that case.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair. Could I ask a follow-up question on that?
In the same vein as making sure I understand. So, there was, there was mention from Ms. Lopez about if we changed some of these classifications now, we might lose some maintenance funding. If, does this action, if we follow through this action, we finish the Complete Streets Plan, we think we have some adjustments we want to petition for, would that lead to a loss of maintenance funding? Or is that only related to if we did it now, and wouldn't be a factor if we change it via this action?
I think generally, the understanding is that Caltrans provides certain types of funding for certain types of roadway classifications. So, yes, there is a possibility that we could lose certain kinds of funding if we were to change them out of a certain qualifying classification. However, we don't know the extent of that at this time, because we're, we don't know what we're going to recommend in the future.
Thank you very much. I'm done, I'm done clarifying.
Sorry, through the chair, I have a follow-up question on that. So, you say it may change the, the funding. Is that like a general fund? Like, just the overall amount of money that we would be able to spend as a city on our roadways could be reduced? Or is it specifically earmarked for specific streets?
Not specific streets, just specific classifications. And this is only pertaining to funding received from Caltrans. So, the city does identify separate funds for other, for maintenance generally. And usually, our funds are augmented by Caltrans, you know, funds. And so, there could be a possibility of reducing the amount of funds that we receive from Caltrans, which I would suggest is a much lower amount than what we currently allocate in our CFP budget. And so, yes, there's a possibility that we could see a lower amount from Caltrans if we were to make some recommendations that remove certain streets from, as certain qualifications, or sorry, as certain classifications. So, yes, there is that possibility. But I would anticipate that we would see that offset by our CFP program.
Okay.
So, there isn't, there isn't an expectation that we would not be maintaining roadways, at least in my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me. Thank you. Sure.
Through the chair, I have one more question, because you mentioned our consultants are on the line, and then they may leave early. While we have our historic resource consultant online, there's, there's a lot of public comment about the historic resources definition. I believe the, the current version, if I can find my many tabs that are open now, Policy CD 5.3 defines historic resources as buildings, structures, sites, and districts that are listed in or determined to be eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places and/or the California Register of Historical Resources, designated resources in the 1989 Historic Buildings Survey Report, and resources found to be eligible through documentation in a historic resources report. And my question is, do we have a definition anywhere of what constitutes a historic resources report? Is that a report that is produced by a architectural historian hired by the city? Could I write a historic resources report and submit it, and would that count? Is there any sort of criteria around what would be considered a historic resources report for this specific definition?
I'll just start by noting that HRE, or Historic Resource Evaluation, we as a city would not accept one that was prepared by someone other than a licensed or a credentialed historic professional. But, Erica, are you available to provide some input in response to that question?
I will add a follow-up to that, because that was helpful. Okay, so you have to be a licensed architectural historian. But I know we've had situations in the past where the city has an architectural historian that produces a report that says something is or is not a historical resource. And then, we've had reports produced by other architectural historians that disagree with the ones that the city has produced. So, I'm curious what happens in that situation. Is there, do we need to be more specific to say, these are reports being commissioned by the city? Or is it okay to, like, maybe that's a discussion question, is it okay to live it broad? Or maybe this question is already answered somewhere?
So, maybe, Erica, if you could weigh, Erica, if you could weigh in on when you have competing historic reports, how, how does that resolve itself? Or, how, how do we address situations like that?
Yes, in that case, it's possible that you could request a peer review of both reports. I have produced those, where you summarize the evaluations in both reports. And you're just kind of providing an independent third opinion. But generally, what happens in that case is those reports all go to the city and then go through the preservation review process. And then, it's ultimately, you know, the Historic Architectural Review Board that would make the determination, the final determination, if the property was historic or not, based on the historic resource evaluations that were reviewed.
Okay, great. So, just to make sure I heard you correctly, you're saying that there is an architectural review board that could adjudicate in those situations?
There is not.
Oh, there is not?
There is, or there is not? I'm not clear.
Well, ultimately, I mean, at the local level, the city, so, in this case, since we don't have, have a historic commission, it would go to the planning commission, and ultimately, the city council.
Ah, okay. Great, thank you. That was my question.
Thank you, Seema.
So, I actually had, also had a question about the historic preservation piece, since the consultants are on the line. There is a comment that the general plan calls for conducting a context study. And, and I know that one of the letters we received from the public was, you know, saying, please elaborate on what that means, so the public can understand it. So, what, is that what we're talking about? It's a, it's a review from an architectural historian that would make that determination?
Sure, I can address that question. So, a historic context statement is separate from a historic resource evaluation report. A historic context statement is a broad document that outlines, and it can, it, it's generally focused on a geographic scope. So, it could focus on a particular neighborhood, or it could look at an entire city. And it's outlining particular themes, such as periods of time, events, and architectural styles that may be significant within the city's history. And then, it would identify representative property types that might be significant against those themes, as well as why they might be significant, and what would be the thresholds for integrity. So, how much alteration could occur on those properties to ultimately be historic resources. And it's, it's a guiding document. It's a key first step to doing a historic resource survey, because as you're going out and surveying buildings, you can look at the age and the architectural style and the community that's associated with the property, and then go back to the, this broader document, the historic context statement, to help inform the evaluation of individual properties, kind of at a larger level with a neighborhood or a citywide historic resources survey. Whereas, a historic resources evaluation report is usually completed on a project-by-project basis, and a project comes up under CEQA, and it's, it's looking, it's more narrowly focused on the history and significance of that property.
Okay. So, the other part of the letter that was sent to us is, talks about that there was, there were tasks in the 2030 general plan that haven't been completed. So, what's the timeline for, for conducting that context study or completing that work? Do we know?
We don't have a specific timeline on that yet. I, I think ultimately, that's where we have our implementation plan, and it comes down to prioritization, and ultimately, council direction. There's obviously a budget piece and a staff resource piece that would go into that. But, so, we'll, we'll be putting that in the plan. We'll get, once we get through the general plan adoption process, the next piece would be identifying where, when would we have the bandwidth to move forward with that priority. And we'll ultimately look to city council for that guidance, because there's trade-offs on which priority we move forward with first, or which priorities. We can do multiple, but we only can do so many before we have to complete certain ones, before we can start on with, start up with other ones.
Okay, thank you. So, I did have one more question as it pertains to public input. And this is from the San Mateo Heritage Alliance. And they're questioning the cumulative impact analysis in their last paragraph, and asking, or stating that the CEQA is incorrect, and, and that we have not, or the city has not fully recognized the past, present, and future impacts on his, on the historic resources. And how does the city respond to that claim?
So, do you want to start, and then maybe Erica could jump in?
The general plan, we haven't really made any significant changes to the language of the draft general plan since the time that it was out for public review. And we prepared the analysis of historic resources, including both the project analysis and the cumulative analysis, considering that set of policies and programs, along with the support and the input from a historic resources expert who's here tonight. So, my response is that the EIR did consider the impacts of the general plan, as well as other changes in San Mateo and in the region, on historic resources when we did the general plan analysis. And nothing has changed substantively since the time that we did that analysis that requires us to revisit it. And would that, would make us draw different conclusions about the level of impact or the mitigation measures needed.
Okay. So, you feel that you've, you've met the obligations to the, to the law?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
I would just kind of clarify or add to that, that this is a programmatic level document. So, we don't know exactly where and when development will occur. We're looking citywide at, at projections that will occur over time. But we don't know whether a property will be proposed that has a historic resource, that is proposed for demolition, or maybe development that occurs directly adjacent. And so, that's where, as specific projects are proposed, we can then evaluate those impacts, because we'll have the more detailed information to really understand if there will or will not be an impact associated with it.
Well, what seemed interesting from the San Mateo Heritage Alliance letter is their first paragraph about the effects of, of, on, on the central neighborhood, specifically from road traffic, particulate matter, and noise, and so on and so forth, and how it could affect the actual structures. And, and to see that as part of the discussion, they have a valid point, because a lot of those roadways will be impacted through the, through the activities of construction. And they've asked for specific routing of, of traffic, which I know is pretty common for construction, large construction projects. I just don't know how the city has, has addressed this in the general plan. I have read the EIR, and I've read the responses. And I just don't know how this was, was, was captured within the responses, if it was.
So, what you're asking is, does, say, a change in air quality or a change in traffic have an impact on an adjacent historic resource? And, and would that be considered an impact under CEQA?
I think the historic resources analysis, and again, I certainly welcome Erica to, to jump in here. But, you know, the, the thresholds for significance under CEQA for the analysis of impacts to the historic resource really focus on whether or not they would impact a qualified resource, or, you know, impair that resource such that it would no longer really be recognized as a resource. And again, I think we did look at the changes that we expect under the general plan to happen, including the amount of development under the general plan, which, as Zach said, is really considered at a programmatic level. So, we're not necessarily looking at individual parcels or blocks and the changes there, but considered holistically, citywide. And given the amount of protections in the city, as well as under other, in the general plan itself, and under state and federal law, we think there are still both adequate protections in place for historic resources, as well as opportunities for additional future site-specific and project-specific analysis to reduce the potential impacts to a less insignificant level.
Great. Did you have anything to add to that, Erica?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that when you're considering impacts to historic resources, you generally consider physical or direct impacts, such as alteration or demolition, visual impacts, such as adjacent, with the design and appearance of adjacent new construction. And then, also, you might consider during the construction process itself, if there's any impacts due to vibration from construction equipment, or possible damage from construction equipment. And so, issues like traffic and pollution and so on, air quality would not be, is not considered when you're assessing impacts to historic resources.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions at this point, or are we, so, go ahead?
Sorry, through the chair. One, that I kept, I'm, I'm just trying to decide if I would ask it or not. We, and so, I'll try not to go astray, but we have a, we have a general plan, and we have the, the set of parcels that are in conflict with Measure Y. And so, we have the council that's going to potentially vote to approve this plan, repeal Plan 2030. And they have a period of time before the ballot measure goes into effect. Is there, I'm just going to ask this clarifying question, I guess. Is there a clear understanding of what, what land use is in effect in that intervening period, until we kind of know the outcome of the ballot measure?
So, the Measure Y really focuses on, on height, density, and intensity. And so, those controls, they're, they're specified citywide, which, where those limits apply, and they would continue to apply. So, whether there's a, a commercial designation now, and maybe that's proposed as a mixed-use designation in General Plan 2040, the characteristics of the mixed-use designation that don't, aren't addressed under Measure Y, or not in conflict with Measure Y, could go forward. So, maybe it's the range of uses that could be allowed. But, the height, density, intensity specified in Measure Y, if that's lower than the intensity of that designation, would govern. So, the, let's say, 50 units an acre, 55 feet in height, if that land use designation allowed more, those lower limits under Measure Y would be what control until such time that it's either amended or, or sunsets. So, the parts that don't conflict could go forward, but the parts that do would revert to the limits set by Measure Y.
Okay, thanks. That's why I appreciated the, the graphic you had, and then I was asking about earlier. It seemed to me like that's, if not a final map, like kind of a quick reference to, to understand where those particular parcels occur. Is, that's fair at a high level?
Yeah. And I think what we wanted to note was, that doesn't mean that every parcel within- And I think what we wanted to note was, that doesn't mean that every parcel within every study area is going to exceed the limit set by Measure Y. I think Study Area 6, which is over off of Campus Drive, that one, it doesn't have any that go beyond as opposed to other areas where you do have certain parcels. So, I think it's illustrative that even within study areas, it's not always to that maximum. There's still a range.
Okay, thank you. That was my only other leftover clarifying question.
Thank you. So, where do we go from here?
I'll go ahead and pull up the recommendation slide if that will help guide discussion.
Through the chair, do you, do you have a, or for the commission, do we, do we want to go through the EIR and then the general plan? Or is there, do you, any way you want to break this up? There's, there's so much here.
Right. So, that's why I was asking Zach where we go because quite often, we will have a playlist, if you will, to follow or a plan. And this is much more of an open-ended discussion if we're going directly to the recommendation. So, I'm asking the commission how you would like to proceed. We've got seven or eight elements and an FEIR here to look at. Do we want to, and I know that we've discussed all of these elements numerous times, and I would assume that most of what we have asked in the past has been answered in one form or another. Yet, that doesn't mean we can't go back and look at each item as we feel appropriate. I don't know what the commission is comfortable with or wants to pursue. I do not have comments on all of the items, or on all of the elements, but I do not want to shut the door to anybody. If you've got concerns throughout, we need to voice them now. But, in what format we do that is up to us. If we go back and look at the Table 1, the General Plan 2040 element topic areas, which is the second page of the agenda, we can do that. And any, any format that you really want to choose, it's up to you guys.
Through the chair, can I ask my fellow commissioners how maybe you have organized, any comments you have? Do other folks have comments on both the environmental impact report and the general plan itself? That could be one way to split it up.
I, my comments tend to be specific to the things that I was reviewing from the general public. I mean, in the comments we received, you know, today, you know, up till today and then, you know, comments. So, I mean, I, yeah, so, I guess I don't have comments all the way through as you were saying.
Okay. Martin?
Yeah, through the chair. I'm remembering our meetings back in September and I feel like I, I was doing deep dives in a number of areas. I feel broadly satisfied that, number one, I think we had great conversations with staff and consultants and this commission at that time. In reading through the new general plan, I see an awful lot of both what, things that I had brought up, and I want to take a moment to express gratitude to the broader team and even to council who went on and discussed some of the things that, in October and November that we had discussed in September. So, I, there's so much that's great in this plan and it's gotten a lot better over time. And so, I could compliment, I want to make sure I do compliment it because it's crazy amount of work that's gone into it and it's, it's really strong in a lot of ways. I'm, sorry, I need to go back to my notes. The thing I, the circle I keep getting caught in is about the density and the height. And I think in, and so, let me just say, I'll just give you all my comments really quick and I'll tee up that one and put it back to you or to my other commissioners. You know, the Bay Shore Commons question about the land use intensity, the, this actually goes back to something I was talking about in September, which was concerns about air quality near highways. And so, for me, I, just as a note to this commission, to pick up these small things and then I'll leave it on the big one. To me, that's fine to reduce that intensity because I continue to remain concerned, generally concerned. I'm really happy with the changes that are written in here, but generally concerned and monitoring that sort of thing. So, the idea that you might reduce density of housing right next to the highway, I'm fine with. I also totally agree that, you know, 11 feet's not sufficient for retail mixed-use commercial as an average. I don't want that to be confusing, so I'm supportive of anything we can do to make sure that there's no confusion there from what I'm hearing. It sounds like everyone's on the same page. But, just supportive of not making, not in any way ending up in an area where that, that 11 foot is somehow interpreted as an average for those commercial mixed-use. Provide multiple examples or make that more clear, generally supportive of that. The EIR as a whole, I really, I think I went as deep as I possibly could in September in understanding the thresholds of significance and some of that will continue to come up. And I can remember a period of time when I was totally a layperson on this and the thresholds of significance are not intuitive, but we talked about all that in September and I'm, I'm happy with it and I'm, you know, agree that there's no, I don't think there's any, you know, significant changes requiring recirculation. I read the statement of overriding considerations and if it's true that we have these same 11 benefits as we had before and the only change is just to add more supporting data for that, I was in support of them already, so totally satisfied with the EIR. And for all the things that were added into this plan and all the work that's gone into it, I can't imagine that anyone could be totally happy with this plan. There's something that's going to leave people dissatisfied in some way, and so, maybe that's the definition of compromise. But, the thing that I'm struggling with is the amount of height and density we ended up with throughout all of this. And so, I'm curious to hear my other commissioners' takes on it. Where I'm at is I'm, I'm wondering, are we going to let the, do you let the good be the enemy of the perfect or whatever that saying is? I wish there was more height and more density for homes in this plan, I really do. I listened to council's deliberations on this in November and it's, it's not straightforward and it's, and I really thought they grappled with it in a way that I respect. So, I'm torn there between, you know, what I think is the best thing for San Mateo's long-term future and providing, you know, finding a document that's a compromise. And I would always come back to the amount of work that staff has put in to try to balance all of these competing interests, so I'm really grateful for that. But, that's really the one, the part that has taken up most of my time in reading through this is trying to understand if that's, we're making decisions for 15 years here of time. And so, I'm racking my brain, trying to make sure we're doing the best we can for the future. Those, that's my opening summary. I'm not going to bring up other technical topics unless someone else does and then it sparks my interest, so.
Through the chair. When this first started, I remember seeing a flyer and my neighborhood, had a neighborhood meeting about the general plan and I went to it. It was six, almost six years ago. It's crazy to think about it. I have a son who I'm now like registering for elementary school. He did not exist back then. It's, it's just crazy to think about how much time and effort and talk and bait has gone into this. And I'm extremely appreciative to staff and consultants for, for the work that they've done and the commitment they've had. You know, overall, there are things that I love and there are things that I'm, I'm even, I could say frustrated about in this. And I think it is something that, that is going to be a compromise for pretty much everybody in the city. And I think the main focus that we have to have is, is this going to be progress in meeting some of the urgent needs that we have over the next now 16 years? And I would say yes. And that's why it's really important to me that we push this forward. Likewise, you know, it's, it can be gutting to see a reduction in the potential for number of homes. But, it, it is what it is. I mean, it's still overall going to be a better plan for our future. So, you know, I'm, I'm really excited overall. So, doesn't, this introduction maybe didn't sound as exciting, as excited as it could be, but there's, there's a lot of stuff in here that's so good. The circulation element is, is going to be so good. We are going to have a lot more room to build housing and affordable housing especially. We're, there's, there's goals and policies that I'm like, I wish it didn't say explore in that. But, I mean, there, you know, I did a search and there's like 20 times that it says that. And obviously, there's lots of things that we don't control when it's like explore cooperation with other cities. Of course, we can't say we're going to because we don't know what they're going to do. But, you know, in a sense, that kind of is a compromise. But, again, I'm happy because it's pushing progress forward. I'm extremely and ecstatically relieved and happy that we've done a lot for the environmental justice aspect of this general plan. It felt like we went from zero to hero in the course of three years. I'm guessing, it seems like three years maybe? And I'm excited for what the potentials are for that. Yeah, I want to get down into some more of the nitty-gritty and brass tacks of stuff that has been brought up recently, especially since, you know, overall, I don't think there's going to be any substantial changes between now and adoption by the, by the city council. But, there are, there were a couple of wording things that I think might need to be massaged so it's, so it's super clear and it strikes the intent that I think is in the text. And so, you know, I do think that we should adjust what we're saying about floor heights. You know, I think about extreme cases where it's a commercial building or retail and somebody might interpret 11 feet average for a two-story building that's retail when you want to have an 18-foot, you know, ceiling heights. So, like, we just need to make sure that that is super clear. And so, we can maybe come back to that after other people have had a chance to talk. And then also, the Bay Shore Corporate Commons, comments, bringing up the, the language in the general plan table of land use designations, LU1 in the, in the phrasing of density, the min-max residential uses. You know, as somebody who's been working on this for a long time, you know, I under, I feel like I understood what that meant, but it's very clear that that could be read differently. And so, I'm of a mind that we both fix that and grant the request of Bay Shore Corporate Commons for the, the new land use designation. So, fix that table just the way the density is defined and then adjust the, the land use designation for Bay Shore Corporate Commons. You know, other than that, like, there's, there's thousands of words to talk about. This is not the time to make major changes at this point. It's pretty well baked. And, and we should be excited. There are, there are compromises, but generally, like, I feel like this is the plan that the city needs today. So, that's my, those are my comments. And I'd like to return to those two, like, language things and then we can hammer that out with the recommendation.
Through the chair, looks like I'm up. I mean, I think both Commissioner Wiggins and Commissioner Nugent, their introductions just far more eloquent than I think I would be. I'll reiterate the amount of time and effort that's gone into this. I think it would be 10,000 hours. I don't think it's a thousand. It's, it's after six years, it's got to be in the tens of thousands. And you said it so much better than I, but I've, I had a very similar thought, which I feel like this document is truly a real example of compromise. There are absolutely things in here that I wish went further, but it does represent a significant amount of progress. And I think as we consider it, as council considers it, as the voters consider it, that is something that we should all keep in mind, is that nothing is going to make everyone happy. And if there are pieces of this we can all be happy with, then we've done a good job. And I think that's true. You know, I, thank you so much, by the way, for Attachment 3. Made it so simple to review thousands of pages again by focusing on what has changed since the last time this came before us and we spent two meetings poring through it in detail. I was going through the changes and I felt like I must have been grinning like a maniac because I saw so many of our suggestions reflected in the changes. Like, I was looking at every single one of these changes, there was not one I disagreed with. And that attachment was very long. And I, you know, I started copying down the ones that I was super excited about so I could dole out a specific thank you. And then I realized I was just copying them all down and that would not be a good use of time. But, like, outdoor air quality mitigation, two new actions on that, so excited to see that. So many great things about the circulation element. I think all of our suggestions were reflected in the circulation element. I saw that stormwater management made it into two new policies and actions. In fact, there's one that says, establish a dedicated funding source for stormwater management. Check, let's just cross that off. Super excited to see an action around restroom facilities and universal design and, you know, full-day licensed childcare at recreation centers. I mean, stuff is in here that we hadn't even thought of, that is just amazing. And so, I was, I was just so happy to read that attachment. I think if I had a couple, few comments around what, what I read, one is I noticed that we have six, I think, new policies or actions that are specifically dedicated to seniors. I think that came out of the council discussions, I also listened to those. And I think the one thing I would say is, let's not forget our kids because many of the things that are great for seniors, like safe access to things, is also great for kids. And I can't find it, I was reading one of these attachments and there was a breakdown of our population by age. And the number of seniors in our community, the number of kids in our community is not far off, right? Like, those populations are similar in size. And so, I had one idea of like, could we write those policies in a more open or abstract way where it would be clear that we're thinking about both of those populations as we look at those things? That was one comment. I think going back to historic resources really quickly, I, I think the definition makes a lot of sense. It's, it's in line with the CEQA definition, so it makes sense to me to align those. And then specifically for the historic resources design standards, I noticed that one change that staff made was to explicitly call out that contributors to historic districts would be considered in the development of the design standards. So, I do think that we are addressing contributors. And this one specifically says that the Secretary of Interior Standards would be used as a basis of these objective design standards. So, it, it sounds like we're moving in a direction to, to consider both historic resources and contributors using the Secretary of Interior Standards as the basis. So, I think we're fine with what we have now and I think the devil in the details is going to be worked out through these conversations that are upcoming as, as it should be. And then, in terms of the specific things that, specific questions we've been chatting about today, I am also fine with the reduction in land use at the Bay Shore Commons for the reasons that Commissioner Wiggins recommended. But, I also think it's a good idea to change the language from min-max to maximum density range because I think that would be more clear for the public to understand what those numbers mean. I think, same with the, we can discuss the average story height. I agree that it is, it can be a little bit confusing in the proposed language that staff has suggested. I think makes it a little clearer what that is trying to do and it's not going to be restrictive. And then, I think, like you all, the core question of land use heights and densities is something I have been thinking about too. And like I said, I've spent so many times looking at these surveys that, you know, I know that in 2022, when we asked our broader community, 63% were in support of 12 stories when it, when it was phrased in a way that said if that allows for the conservation of open space. And then when we asked our likely voters in 2023, And then when we asked our likely voters in 2023, you know, it was only 45% that were in support of 12 stories. It's 59% that were in support of 10, if you are considering locations that are close to transit stores and restaurants. So those two qualifiers on those questions were slightly different, but I do think they kind of get at the same thing. And I think what I struggle with is that we, as a planning commission and the city council and the city staff, we are trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of the community and what the community wants. And you're getting a different answer when you ask the broad community than when you ask likely voters. And ultimately, this has to pass at the ballot. So that is the struggle I have. I do think that 10 stories would pass at the ballot. 59% in support is quite a large majority. However, I also think council has made it very clear that they do not want that. And so, I'm not sure what the benefit would be to us recommending any changes to the heights and density limits at this point, but it's something I'm eager to discuss with all of you. It's it for me.
Okay, so, let's see. Thank you for all your comments. And I also want to start, everybody's been providing lots of thank yous to everyone, but I also want to say, the comments from the public and the, specifically, the members of the public and, you know, the residents of San Mateo, not only, you know, thinking about all the output or outreach and the survey, people that took a survey, people that, you know, showed up and have spoken up, written letters. I mean, it's just a huge effort on their part, too. And, I mean, I have friends that have talked to me about it, that, you know, oh, I went to that meeting and, you know, and, you know, we're very excited about it. So I am just impressed and amazed at, like, the citizens of San Mateo and their involvement in this as well. So thank you to them also. Okay, so I'm just going to kind of run through, I'm not sure if we're, like you said, yours was an introduction and maybe we're going to dive deeper, but I'm not sure that we need to, but these are my comments on a few other things. And I think, as I said, it's mostly in relation to the things that we've kind of gotten down to now, so not backtracking. I mean, that attachment was really helpful. I did find, you know, there were some things, it was like, oh, wait, what did I, you know, I was going back through my notes and trying to figure out, were they addressed or were they not? And sometimes it was a little bit unclear, but generally speaking, it was a great historical reference of all the things we talked about. And there they were, you know? So that was great. Thank you. Okay, so per the comments from the Bohannon Group, I agree that that language regarding story height should be changed. I do not see why we should reference 11 feet as an average story height in the two places. In my mind, I think it should be not referenced as, at all. It also, I think it says average, and so, I mean, that indicates that like, a story could be less than 11 feet floor to floor. And floor to floor would be, you know, can't be too much less than that. So I think it's, I think in one of the two locations on the page 40, it said average. So I would like to see that just deleted. I mean, the, it could be defined in the zoning ordinance specifically, but, because I think that it could be incorrectly interpreted in the future, as our speaker said tonight. And then the comment from Bay Shore Corporate Comments, I mean, Commons, I think should also be revised. That, as you said, that does, as Zach clarified, that does set the upper limit, not the minimum limit. So thank you for that clarification and I think that should be clarified so it's clear to everyone. On the historic resources element, I think that what Joanna, what you commented on is that, you know, it's addressed, but that it, you know, to, to address the historic preservation ordinance, it, you know, it's a matter of prioritizing all of these action items and that, you know, that are part of this general plan now. And in my mind, I think it needs to be moved up from the bottom of the priority list. There's, you know, there's enough interest out there for historic, the historic architecture of our city. And it's not been a priority, it's been low on the priority list. And although there's many actions and, I mean, it may not be deemed the highest priority given that there are, you know, housing demands to be addressed, but I think it needs to be moved up and we should be looking at an ordinance for how to address historic architecture in our city. And then regarding the, you know, the question of, we can, I don't know if we're going to talk about it in more detail, but I agree that like, what everyone's sort of been saying that, you know, it may not be, that this is a document that is comprised of compromise in the best sense of the word, really, that we are bringing together all of these, you know, various factors. And so, the mixed, or the high two versus mixed use high two, I'm sorry, the high two and mixed use high two, those changes, I mean, I think that that, I don't have any changes to that at this point in time. I feel kind of the same way. I mean, we could discuss it in more detail, but I think that that's, I'm curious, I don't know if we're going to, if we're planning to discuss that in more detail or if everyone's saying that we've, you know, or what the next step is on that.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of discussion, but sure.
Okay.
Well taken.
I had a few other comments, but I think everyone's kind of covered it. I don't know, I think I'll leave the rest, my notes aren't that clear, so I have several minor items here. Let me just make sure. I, well, I guess I'll just comment that on the EIR, that the statement of overriding considerations went through that in great detail. And I think the key to that is that it all seems intentional and it seems very well thought out and that, you know, when we look at like overriding considerations, you know, that's, I think, what we want to be able to communicate, that these, that, you know, that there's some intentionality to the decisions. And that allows for that, that, or that requires that, really. So I was happy with that. And lastly, I guess I just want to note that the fiscal analysis is very good news. Nobody commented on that, but, you know, because one question I had in my mind throughout the process, particularly of reviewing the EIR is, you know, how will this be paid for? Who's funding this? Where does this come from? And, you know, so it was good to know that overall, the development of the city is really a positive revenue. So that was exciting news. I think those are my comments.
I do have some comments that I'd like to make, but before I go to that portion, I would like to discuss the items that we have all kind of found in common excluding the height at this point. But for the Bohannon, the height there, the Commons area, whatever of these kind of small cleanup issues I'd like to address, if you feel we should go there. So I think the Commons, if that's the correct term for their development, was just misunderstanding that the minimums, it's not a minimum 100 per acre, it's, it's, you know, it could be 100 to 130 per acre. But to classify their property from one classification to another, is that something that we can do here or is that, that has to be held to discussion with the, with the city council?
No, you could make a recommendation to make a change to a land use designation on the map as part of your recommendation.
Okay, so how does everybody feel about making that recommendation?
So, through the chair, here's what I, here's how I look at it. So I do think that we need to adjust the language in the table so it's super clear. I think that's the first, first step. And then we, because they're asking for it and it's probably not an ordeal, let's recommend to change it to the, to the medium that they're, they're asking and then it will go to this council in March. And that'll give them a chance to change their mind and go back to the council, be like, wait, 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 we don't want it to change? Or yes, we want to stick with what our recommendation is to change it to the medium. I think that's the best way because it gives them the ability to, if it is, if it is just based on a, the error on our descriptor of our table, then that gives them the time to change their mind.
Sure.
If it is what they truly want, then all good.
Yeah.
I have a question, though. Are we talking about just one specific property within that?
Yes.
And is that appropriate, I guess? Like, should we be looking at the adjacent properties or?
It was actually a lower intensity of land use and then they came before, I can't remember if it was the general plan subcommittee or the planning commission, it was here. They came before the planning commission asked for it to be increased. And so, that's how it ended up getting increased to mixed use high two. And then now they're asking for it to be reduced again.
I recall that, but I guess I wasn't sure if even that was just one specific property.
If I remember correctly, that, that property was not in a study area and we specifically asked that it be upzoned because they, because the property owner was asking for it.
I think it was listed in the housing element.
Okay, yeah, now that sounds familiar. Thank you for that.
So it's Shorty Nurse Cat of land use designation in our, it toggles back and forth until we finalize it.
Would be, you know, once a designation is set, are there ways, if there were a new owner to, to purchase the property, could they come in and ask for rezoning themselves?
It would be a general plan amendment to get a different land use designation, but yeah, a project can always ask for that. And in this case, the EIR did evaluate the higher development potential there.
Okay.
I agree with Commissioner Nugent's suggestions.
Yeah, so do we, are we good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So what do we want to say?
So the attorney, no?
Okay, thank you. And then do you want to, do you want to specify specific language or is it pretty clear for the table?
I think Zach's got it.
I think Zach, yeah.
So you're the changing the tables, yeah, I was going to make that recommendation at the end if you weren't already considering it, that I think that's a really important clarification, is that replace min-max with maximum density range.
Yes.
Because that's the intent of what's provided in that table.
Okay. And do we want to discuss the height element specifically for the Hillsdale mall, or the Hillsdale's letter clarification? I don't under, would that normally be addressed in the zoning code, not in the general plan?
So I guess generally speaking, height is, is more of a mechanism that's defined in the zoning code. Every jurisdiction's different, some like ours choose to get much more specific about height within the general plan. The intent of this general plan was to kind of move away from specifics and that's where the, the topic of stories came in. So we did identify a potential need to help folks understand what a story meant in terms of dimensions and that's the origin of where this definition came from. So, but yeah, I guess knowing that that's, that was added as a recommendation and the council supported it during the draft, now hearing these comments, do you want to leave it as is? Make a modification, maybe along the lines of what staff has recommended? Or you could recommend removal and just rely on, on stories generally? So I think that's kind of up for where you want to see it, what you want to include in your recommendation.
Through the chair, I'll just jump ahead and say, I agree with Commissioner Williams that we should just remove the reference to the height.
Yeah, so excuse me, I remember discussions recently where we were discussing heights, ground floor heights, maybe to the 12 or 14 feet. And I'm not exactly sure what that context was.
Through the chair, was that the objective design standard?
Right, right. So, you know, are there any conflicts with that?
Well, this conflicts with ODS currently, like, the 11 feet conflicts with what's in ODS.
Yeah, say for commercial.
ODS is only for residential. So I don't know if it conflicts with it or not.
Through the chair, if I may, Manera Santir, planning manager. So there is no conflict with the objective design standards, even with the 11 feet in there, because it's the 11 feet average that is currently called out in the general plan. And the objective design standards was only requiring 12 feet minimum heights for ground floor retail or ground floor commercial. It was, you know, not saying what the rest of the stories had to be, so there is no conflict.
Perfect.
Well, mathematically, no, I would, I'm sorry, through the chair, that's actually, so if you have a, say, a three-story mixed use building and it qualifies for objective design standards because it's a, it would qualify for objective design standards because it would be classified as a, as a residential project, say, because it's major, it's like, what, six, yeah, two-thirds residential and the residential portions are 11 feet and then the bottom floor is retail and it's 18 stories. That would be very far off of an 11-foot average.
Average.
And I'm worried that that, that, you know, we run into where we end up accidentally pushing ourselves into a situation where it's not architecturally ideal. Like, you're not going to want to have a really short retail space and it seems unnecessary.
This entire discussion is why I think that we should remove the height reference.
Right, I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we, here's just one comment, if we wanted to have, if it was included there to help the public understand, then I would say, having, having some space, make it very clear, for example, a 100% residential project with 11, 11-foot stories on average would end up being, you know, a four-story would be 44 feet high. And that way, people can understand, but it, it should be just an example, it should be clear that it's just for example. And then we should also include that, that, so people understand, retail and office uses will often have higher height, floor heights than residential. And then just leave it at that so that people can understand.
My opinion would be, it would be more appropriate to address it in the zoning codes.
Yes.
And to remove it, any statements of this from the general plan.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Right, so what is the next item? Were we looking at verbiage for the historical districts or?
I'm sorry, through the chair, before we, before we close on this, I think, I just want to make sure that, that it's helpful for, because the, the city council is not, they're not experts, they're not architects, they're not going to know necessarily why we may have made this decision. And I think it's important that the reason behind this discussion is presented to them, if that's possible. That's the only thing I just.
We can definitely provide context to how that.
I trust you, I just wanted to make it explicit.
Well, I guess that's a good point because I kept thinking the opposite. I'm like, doesn't everyone that's using this information know what we're talking about? Like, they're applicants or developers or builders, but I guess that's not necessarily true.
Okay, so what else do we want to clean up? I thought there was another item, no?
Well, my comments about the historic resources element were just that the, were really more as an action item, really more addressing the action item of like a historic preservation ordinance. And how do we, it's not, it's not cleaning up the, the general plan per se, it's more like, what happens later? How do we, how do we prioritize that to, so it doesn't slip away?
Through the, through the chair, one of the things we did, so with every, every element has various goals and then policies and then actions. And so, we've got, there's a lot of categories of actions. Within the historic resources section, we did add updating our historic preservation ordinance as the top action and that was intentionally, because we did want to order, when you have a grouping of actions, we do want to list the one that's been identified as the highest priority at the top to kind of illustrate, no, that when we start to take these on, this should be the first action. So updating our historic preservation ordinance is the top action, followed by the community-wide context statement. And then moving into some kind of the updating the historic resources inventory and doing those neighborhood surveys that have been talked about as well. So those are the top three actions in that area of the community design and historic resources elements. I guess in that sense, we tried to illustrate it, but knowing obviously, there's, there's a lot of actions that have, have high interest in moving forward. And then within our implementation plan, we can, we can identify where there might be priority, but I mean, ultimately, each year when we, when we work with council on goal setting for the upcoming year, that's goal-setting for the upcoming year, that, that's really where something like that would ultimately get prioritized. And then the associated funding and resources.
So, given that, that's partway there, great, but it's, there's not like a tracking, you know, for, I mean, for, not just for historic resources element, but any other of the elements, like there's, like, how do we track, how does anybody, not just me or we, but I mean, like, how are those things tracked for those action items? That's, I know that's a big question for planning staff, like, how do you do that? Like?
So that's where the implementation comes in as a start. So the implementation plan just focuses on the actions, and, because those are, those are the to-do list. But we've heard input, and I think we have in various places, the, the concept of a dashboard where we can track progress, and so I think that would be one way that we're going to look into. How, how can we help share that out, keep that information, so we have a running tally as we start to make progress? All right, we're working on these four, initiatives that encompass these four, six actions this year, and then over time, hopefully, we're checking the box. And like you mentioned on, say, the dedicated funding source, that's, that's an initiative that's already been taken on, and that, that was successful. So I think that's one way, because there's a lot there, so it's easy for things to get lost. So we'll look at following adoption, how we can achieve stuff like that. So there is the ability for the community to track over time.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair, if I may add to that, the statute, state law does require individual jurisdictions to report on general plan implementation every year, so that's an annual requirement, and we send those reports to council typically in March, and it's sent to the State Office of Planning and Research the 4 April 1st every year.
Thank you. Go ahead, Martin.
Yeah, sorry, through the chair, just to answer your, your question, the, I was taking notes as we went around. I think if, yeah, if we don't have any, I didn't have notes that anyone had anything else to, to discuss. I didn't, the historic definitions were okay with me as well. I'm not going to repeat kind of what we already went through. I think we just addressed the prioritization of, of historic preservation actions, and I think statement of overt considerations, Commissioner Williams and I touched on that, but we're in agreement. So I don't, I don't see anything else unless we just want to kick around, you know, heights and density.
I think, I think that's the last one if we want to discuss.
Dancing around that one.
Yeah.
Through, through the chair, there's one more. I think Vice Chair Patel brought up, like, adding kids or children into policies related to seniors.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure if I want to suggest, I guess, what do you think? I'm not sure if I'm, I, I didn't think about it to the point of actually drafting suggested changes or language.
Through the chair, I, it's something I think about as well. I, we're all in different stages of life, and the protecting our seniors and our kids are both super important. And my thought on this was, and I know I recall sort of the process, some of these things being added, and I think when, when those suggestions were made, I think the spirit of them was to focus on seniors. And so I didn't want to come back after the fact and do anything that might appear to undercut that, or, or lose some of the intent that was suggested. And so for me, if I, if anything, I would, you know, say, like, let's sort of take similar things and then add six more policies related to kids. But I, I just feel like there are enough places, so you're saying, the things you, you focus on oftentimes are about safety among others, and there's so much great content in here that it, it didn't feel to me like it was worth adding more words, even though for me, I would, you know, be a vocal advocate for making sure that we're making San Mateo a place that's, that's safe for, you know, kids of all ages.
If, if I may make one specific point where I think this, this comes to bear is Action C 1.14, Safe Routes for Seniors. And the action reads, "Develop a Safe Routes for Seniors Program to Promote Active Transportation Connections for Seniors in Collaboration with Seniors Organizations and Based on the Likely Walking Routes for Older Adults Identified in the Age-Friendly Action Plan." I love, I love the idea of an age-friendly action plan, right? Because, and that's kind of what I meant. It doesn't specify what age means, and it feels like a very inclusive term. But the reason I'm, I'm looking at this action is I know safe routes to schools
Yeah.
has been a huge concern. There's been eight people hit near schools in the past five months, and I know there's a whole group of moves in Mateo and parents at local elementary schools that are organizing right now around Vision Zero. But I just wondered, for that specific action,
Yeah.
do you just say safe routes? Do you say safe routes for seniors and to schools? Like, is there something that we could do about that one that made it more inclusive?
Through the chair, if maybe I could just provide a thought on that. One of the reasons that there was that focus on seniors and aging was that the, the community, I think there was public services and facilities element, did already include a section about youth and children and priorities, including a specific policy around, say, safer off to schools. And so I think that came out of, hey, this is a group that should get focused. So I, I think what we want to highlight is the youth and children, they are addressed, and they do have a, a section that does have a number of policies and goals specific to them. And so I think then that was also countering to say, well, let's also address seniors and aging. But I think also we want to recognize a lot of the goals, I mean, whether it's, say, focusing on safety, it's going to benefit the community as a whole, including our, our younger populations as well. So I think sometimes it's, it's the broader goals that will naturally benefit that specific population as part of the larger population.
And to your point, I think it's fine to not change anything, to take the focus away too. And, you know, again, I'm looking at this, and one of our actions is a new one, is an age-friendly city, right? And that one specifically doesn't say seniors, and I think that is very broad and could encompass residents of all ages.
And then through the chair, one other comment. We, we had, as staff noted, this one map, land use map situation over on Burrell and Bouvet, about changing the office designation to align with those existing uses, not adding any intensity, but just recognizing the, the intensity and height that's existing on those sites. So we'd be interested to know your recommendation on, on that as well.
I agree with that.
Actually, I, I thought there was something similar that I saw on the map as it pertains to Third Avenue and El Comune Real. I think some of the existing structures there are shown to be shorter, if you will. And I'm not exactly sure. I looked at that a couple of weeks ago. The 12-story building seems to be classified as four to six, not sure, but it might be something you might want to look at if there's possible cleanup there.
We can definitely look at that. I mean, and I, I know the site, I know one of those does have a high, higher intent, like, I think it's a, either a mixed-use or residential high, but if there's an adjacent building that also has height, we can definitely look at that.
Yeah, I could be wrong, but it caught my eye. It looked like it may have been classified incorrectly.
Through the chair, could I ask a clarification on that? Zach, is it always the intent to, to zone or to not create unintentional non-conforming uses? Is that kind of to your, your question about the, if there's an 11-floor building and it's zone four to six, is that the general approach to always align to the height of what's there, or does this particular site that you're referencing, which I'm supportive, by the way, is this a unique case in that category?
The general intent The, the general intent with a land use map is we don't want to unintentionally create non-conforming situations where you've got existing legal structures that are inconsistent with new zoning or, or land use apps. There could be intention to it. Maybe we want to facilitate change in some way or another, or say, you know what, this may be, but this is inconsistent with. So you can, you can make policy decisions in that way, recognizing there would be an inconsistency with the existing use. But yeah, I think we don't want to unintentionally do that.
Just to reiterate, I'm supportive of this one, but.
I'm also supportive of this one.
I actually did a project on the sixth floor of one of these buildings, so I am definitely in support of it. It's occupied now, but.
So was that the last minor cleanup until we want to discuss
Mm-hmm.
high two, or whatever the proposal may, may have been? I do have one, one minor comment on the land use map. I think that there are still flyers or, or maps out in the general public, and, and I know there is one at the main library, which still reflects the higher, higher building limits, which I'm a little surprised it was still there. But maybe that was what was adopted in 2022, but it's not being, it, it's not what we're looking at this evening.
We did develop displays as part of the, the outreach effort for the draft general plan that was published last year, and so at that point, the high two is still in there. And so the maps and some of the other materials still include that. And at this point, I mean, the, the goal is, much of that is, is consistent, but we aren't necessarily looking to replicate those materials at this point, getting through the, the final general plan. But we are including updated flyers and other materials on those tables that provide information about where the general plan is currently.
Okay. Before any closing comments from the chair, do we want to, or anyone else? Do we want to venture into the height category? If we want to bring that to the council's attention as a, a point that we might want to see examined, or, or are we going to let it go?
Through the chair, I'll offer my, my two cents, and just relate to, curious to, to see what, how the other commissioners are thinking about it. When I start thinking about this, you know, I felt like the, the, and I'm not a expert in surveys or ballot measures or anything. I thought that, but I was paying attention to the surveys that we've done, and appreciative that we have all those, and, and I thought, you know, there's a lot of thoughtful detail in the way the questions were asked. So where I sit, that all seems like it was really well done. And I'm, as a LA person in this sphere, it looked to me like we had support for higher. And when it came to us in September, I think we had, we had more heightened density. So I don't know that I spoke up saying that I'm happy to see this particular heightened density, but I know it then went to council, and they kind of, you know, forged in the crucible in a way. They, they looked at a number of things. They looked at that, they looked at these, call it, different opinions throughout the community, and they, they were thinking about how, one of the things I heard them discussing at least, is how does a ballot measure play out? And, you know, you, and knowing that there's a risk that a ballot measure doesn't pass, and then you're in this weird limbo area. And so as I think about it, I, I followed on the same route. I feel like I'm moving out of my area of, I don't even want to say expertise, I'm just way off out there. And so I don't, I start to wonder if that's where, if that's the way I should be thinking about it, or if, if council is the right group to look at that, that aspect of it. And so for me, from a planning perspective, I feel like it's a, it's a missed opportunity to get, to achieve climate goals, to get more affordable housing close to transit. I don't want a lot more housing close to the highway, for example, but there is, there's those three transit stops where I lament not having the opportunity. But I keep coming back to, this is, this goes into ballot measure and density bonus law, and the way that it will be portrayed throughout the ballot process. And I keep, I just get this nagging sense that I'm like, I'm now speculating on things that I feel are like a little bit outside of my purview. And so that leads me to kind of back off and say, hey, council looked at this, that I, this is what they came up with. And so I feel like I can express that I wish something had come out differently, but I don't myself feel an urging to go beyond what I just said, in, in a recommendation. I, I don't know that I'll, I, I'm curious to hear what other people say. I'm sort of thinking I'm, I'm not going to sort of recommend a change, because I, I did listen more than once to their entire meeting on the November 6th or 13th, or whenever it was, and I listened very closely to it. And so I don't, I don't think there's any new news here, you know, there's just sort of, it's come back to us, this was changed, we're discussing it now. That's the extent of my comments on that particular one.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiggins. This is, this is just one of those additional compromises. There's compromises that we've had throughout this process, and I would have liked to have seen high two remain, but I don't see a path forward, and I'm not sure it's worth bringing it to the city council. My fear is, I think we lose more if this becomes something that pushes the, the ballot measure over the edge of not passing. And so it's a little bit game theory in a sense, like, well, what, what's gonna, what's gonna be able to pass? There's always going to be people that don't want anything to change. There's always going to be people that want more to change. And we're always going to not know, we're never going to know what could have passed after it passes, if it passes, yeah. And so it's just a best guess, it's a best, it's a kind of a, a window, or a, just trying to see, you know, thumb in the air, based on some data, what is most likely to, to, to get passed by the populace? And so I, I, I guess it, I just don't see it changing. And my, the, the silver lining is that my, hopefully, the fact that it's, it's lower capacity for, lower volume for, for building makes it much, makes it more palatable to people on the fence, so.
I was not planning on discussing this until Commissioner Wiggins brought this up and said, this is the one thing that still sticks in my head. I think what I'm struggling with is what is our role as a planning commission? I think our role as a planning commission is to advise the council on decisions and solutions that we think are the best for the community. And if we were to look at it from that lens, I think we were all in agreement last year, the general plan subcommittee was in agreement last year, that higher heights and densities near transit is what's best for the climate, best for housing, best for the community. However, if you now turn to the game theory, and you turn to the compromise, you can go down a very deep rabbit hole, and I've gone down that rabbit hole myself, of wondering what is passable at the ballot, wondering how large is the crowd that is going to oppose any change, and they exist and they have a website? How large is the crowd that doesn't think this has gone far enough? What is the risk of sending something to a ballot that doesn't have either group supporting it? Would it be more likely to pass if one of those groups supported it? If you either said, no changes to heightened densities, and we can get those people on board, or we're going to go back to 12 stories and get the other side on board? Does that actually make it more likely? When I go down the rabbit hole, I worry that we've ended up at the minimum, at the local minimum of that parabola, where it actually has the least support. That's what keeps me up at night. But I don't think that is our thing to, to think about and to make a decision on. I think those considerations and that game theory and what is likely to pass is the council's realm. And I think they're thinking about those things, I think they did think about those things a lot. And so while I would be totally okay if everybody else at this dais said, we think 10 stories or 12 stories is in the best interest of the community, and we want to make one last recommendation that we should be doing that, I would be on board with that. But I also would be on board with saying, we've already had a very long process, and we've arrived at a position, and we've arrived at a compromise, and that's, that's where we've all decided to, to hang our hat and see where we go from here.
Thanks for your comments. Those are very eloquently put, and I agree with the three previous commissioners. I would like to leave it as is. And I, I will just make a couple of comments that I, you know, I, I thought about it from, from the point of view of the ballot and what the city council was doing, and I also couldn't help but think about it from the point of view of, you know, someone in architecture and construction, and, you know, took a look at sort of like, what are the, what are the ramifications, and how much more expensive is a 12-story building? I didn't get into the specifics of that, but, you know, it's still construction and fire-rated construction materials and methods, more fire and life safety measures, automatic, I mean, fire sprinklers and fire alarm systems anyway, but designed for high-rise versus mid- anyway, but designed for high-rise versus mid-rise. So fire rated construction types for high-rise instead of mid-rise. Vertical circulation, elevators are, you know, probably a different type of elevator. And the structural engineering is of course going to be a lot different and higher cost than it would be for a lower building. So, I mean, all of those things make me think, you know, is this worth, you know, continuing the process and, you know, and, and taking any risks over when, I don't know how many projects like that there are, there would be in the pipeline. So it's, you know, we're all sort of trying to make our best guess and estimates here about what's the right thing to do. But, so in the end, I feel like it's, it's acceptable to me the way it is.
Great. Thank you all. So, I don't know, for the last six or eight months, I've really struggled with understanding how the previous city council's decision to support High Two was overturned and why, and how that actually happened. I think we were going down a road with the previous council, which the public was supportive and they were supportive of. And then we get a new council and we get a new survey and it's changed, which was really a disappointment to me personally, because I felt that the previous council had done their diligent work and they had reached out to the public and they had support. And to see that drastic change occur over relatively short, quick manner, I think really set us back as a city in what we were able to, to do. And you have more options, just because you have a high, it's a High Two doesn't mean you're going to build it. It's not a minimum. It's a maximum. And it's, it's, it just, you know, there are, there are numerous decisions that are made by city councils constantly that the incoming council agrees, agrees with. And, and they usually don't go back and overturn previous decisions, but they did in this case. And I don't think it was done with the full understanding of what impetus had brought us to that point. You know, we've had two surveys conducted and as it pertains to height limitations, and both surveys have been in support of the High Two. You know, we are here to discuss and promote what the public wants. And if you have data that demonstrates clear support for a particular item or issue, then that is what we are supposed to support. And we haven't done that. I've heard numerous times from city council members and staff that clear data is key to making good public policy. Well, we have the clear data on this issue. It's being ignored and we are losing the trust of the public because of it. We've all known all along for years that this general plan was going to have to be approved by a ballot measure or by, by the voters. And unfortunately, as far as I can see, we do not, this, this plan does not have the support of either the housing advocates or the, the low-growth community. And I struggle to, I struggle to understand how we think or the council thinks that this is the right track when we're not getting the support. We've got letters from HLC or a letter from HLC that says, it's a good plan, yet we still want to see High Two. We've got SMIRG, who is completely against this plan. I'm glad I'm not a city council member. I'm glad I'm not a city staff member. But to figure this out is going to be critical to see where we end up in November of this year. I know there was a, there was a recent comment by our assistant city manager in, in the newspaper. She was asked, well, what happens if this doesn't pass? And I believe her answer was, well, that's going to be really complicated. It's true. This whole process has been complicated, but we're supposed to get it to the point where we have a clear path and we don't have a clear path now. And I'm not saying it's an easy process, because it's not. For everything that everybody has said here, it's not. Yet when we don't have support from either faction, I don't know how we end up gaining the approval for this measure as it comes forward. To me, I would be much happier if we had continued with the High Two. I think the public had become comfortable with that. They were supporting it. And now we've taken that component away and neither faction is happy. So I think we all know this. We all know the challenge. I don't know if bringing back High Two would solve it, but I also don't know if it would detract from the possibility of passing, of passing a ballot measure. So as it stands, I honestly don't think that our position will sway the council. They've made their decision. They've made it very clear to the public where they stand. I think that with the data that was available when they made that decision, I don't find it the appropriate decision. But that's how it, it stands today. And I don't think our influence in that matter will make a difference. I think it's a lost opportunity. But those aren't hard decisions. So I think we can all agree that we, we don't have to go with the measure, with the, we're supporting it going up, correct? Okay, cool. Do we have any closing comments from any of the commissioners?
To the chair, I, I feel like we're kind of ending the, ending the night a little bit on a downer. And so I want to, I want to say, yeah, clearly we all recognize the compromises that have, that we've had. But I just want to finish and just say that I'm excited for this. This is, this is, this is really great. There's a lot of hard work that has gone into it. I'm super thankful to all the staff that have done it, done their work and consultants. And, you know, there's so much in this general plan that's going to make our city much more fabulous than it already is. I love this city so much. I love all the friends that I have in my neighborhood. I love all my times I can walk downtown and get a bite to eat. I can go shop at therapy now. I can, it's like, this is a great city. And I feel like this, this is going to make it that much better. And I want to just remember that.
All right. I'll second that.
Yeah.
Yeah, motion to support that this is a great city.
I will, I will, I know we all said it at the beginning, but I'm just gonna, I want to close out on a big thank you because this has been a labor of love. Like, I don't think you could have stuck through this for six years if you didn't love the city and if you didn't love the work. And I'm also very excited about all of the great things that are in this general plan. And I just, I can't imagine how many long nights and how much time staff has spent on this and the army of consultants. And just thank you all for everything you put into this.
Yeah. And again, thank you to the public too, for just stepping up and participating as well. Yeah.
Thank you all. I think this, this general plan process has been a learning experience for all of us to see it. I've followed it the whole way through and to see where it started to where it ended up is incredible. The public input has been fantastic. Staff's work has turned out a very great project. I want to also mention Commissioners Adam Nugent and Seema Patel's time on the subcommittee and what that meant for us as commissioners. You brought so much detail and quality comments that we didn't have to continue to educate ourselves. You actually educated us. And it was a huge, huge benefit. You know, to see this GPU, you know, work its way through, to me, the most important components have been the equity and the environmental issues. You know, working with One Shoreline to lend their expertise has been fantastic. You know, the, the city has adopted the County of San Mateo's multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan. And that's a huge step in the right direction. You know, we are trying to figure out as a county on how we can protect billions of dollars of private and public property, which is, to me, should be our item number one on our list to do. And I'm hoping that One Shoreline is able to help us, you know, really mitigate a lot of the issues that are just threatening our community on a daily basis. There's probably only one item that I have felt from day one, which we have, we have not capitalized on. And that was through our zone, through excluding R1 neighborhoods in the discussion on how we can accommodate a more just and equitable city. We all know that segregation has left us with a lot of social ills. And to be able to really address some of these ethical problems, we need to integrate our neighborhoods and we still are not. And that, to me, is a much more difficult task than fixing the structural components. We don't have ways to actually integrate our policies and, and make them work where we can actually be more of a community rather than separated communities. There, to me, one of the most exciting things that has happened in the city in a long time was the passage of the flood, flood control measure. That's one of the first times I've seen all of San Mateo come together and recognize that we are a community and we need to address our, our issues as one. And to me, that was so encouraging to see that maybe we are making some progress. We can break some of these barriers. We can realize that we're, we're here as one community and we're willing to fix some of our disparities. I think that this general plan has the ability to transform our city in, in many, many positive ways. And once the, the implementation process starts, I think, I hope it's robust. I think that so many of the, this, the subcommittee's recommendations and this commission's recommendations have been incorporated into the plan. Now it's just going to be a matter of making sure we implement what we have shown our goals to be. One of our, one of the overriding factors has been equity. And Adam has done a great job of incorporating some of those components in his own neighborhood. And I think you've done a great job in that, that avenue. And I think we need to just make sure that this document is a document that will be implemented and not just used as a reference. But I think it's, I think it's an incredible general plan. And I also think it took this long because we've changed city managers once or twice. We've changed most department heads a couple of times. And people have had to come in and just kind of pick up where they've been introduced to it and then all of a sudden they're running the department. That's got to be a challenge. It's got to be difficult. And, and I think it's made it considerably longer than I think any of us really wanted. But to be able to do that under those types of circumstances where you haven't had the leadership in place throughout those five or six years, that's a challenge in itself. So thank you all. Do we want to go to the recommendation? Great.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to recommend that the city council certify the general plan's final environmental impact report and adopt Strive San Mateo General Plan 2040 based on the listed findings and with four recommendations. The first is to remove the reference of height from the definition of story. The second is to change table LU-1, the density column label, from min-max to maximum density range. The third is to change the land use designation of Bayshore Commons to mixed-use medium one. And the fourth is to change the land use designation of Bovet Road slash Burrell Avenue to Office High.
I will second that motion.
Chair Bader?
Yes.
Vice Chair Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Thank you. We'll close that item. Nothing because it's a special meeting. Thank you.